Royal Commission into Violence, Abuse, Neglect and Exploitation of People with Disability is now in session.
Good morning, everybody. I wish to commence by acknowledging the Gadigal people, the Eora nation on whose traditional lands the Royal Commission is sitting today, and to pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. I also pay our respects to all First Nations people who are following this hearing. Yes, Mrs.
Good morning, Commissioners and good morning, everyone, following the proceedings. Can I start by dealing with the evidence from Professor Burns yesterday? And I said that I'd deal with the tenders overnight.
Yes.
So there's two documents that I wish to tender. The first is the chapter in Lawmaking and Human Rights that Professor Burns authored, and it's the Economic and Social Rights in the Australian Parliamentary Human Rights Scrutiny Process. If you could mark that chapter as Exhibit 18.11.
Yes, that can be done, thank you.
And Professor Burns' curriculum vitae, if that could be marked 18.12.
That too can be done, thank you.
Professor Burns mentioned his understanding that some advice provided to the Royal Commission would be tendered. Commissioners, that's advice that Professor Burns provided in relation to Article 24 of the CRPD, and it was indirect response to one of the background papers provided by the Australian Government, which was described as Background Paper Part Two. We haven't asked the Commonwealth in the preparation of these proceedings to be ready to respond to Professor Burns' report, but we will be doing future hearings concerning Article 24 and inclusive education. And Commissioners, what I have in mind is that we deal with the Commonwealth's Part Two Background Paper on Article 24 at that occasion. And likewise, we may need to bring Professor Burns back. He may not wish to hear that, but we may need to bring him back so we can deal specifically with his advice.
We'd be very happy to welcome Professor Burns back.
So I just want to clarify that position in relation to the advice.
Thank you.
So our first witnesses this morning, and I'm very pleased to welcome Dr Helen Watches and Miss Karen Toohey. And we're going to examine the experience in the ACT, of the ACT Human Rights Act. So I understand that both Dr Watches and Miss Toohey have made their oaths and affirmations in the waiting room. So, Dr Watches, can I start with you?
Just before you do that, can I thank you both, Dr Watches and Miss Toohey, for coming to the Royal Commission to give evidence. We appreciate your assistance to the Royal Commission. Just so you're aware, you may already be aware, but the three Commissioners sitting on this hearing are all in the Sydney Hearing Room on this occasion. Commissioner Alistair McEwan and Commissioner John Ryan are joining me in the Sydney Hearing Room. Yes, yes, Mrs.
Dr Watches, you've prepared a fairly detailed resume for the Royal Commission, setting out your extensive experience in the public sector and human rights, also your publications and various awards. You hold a Doctor of Philosophy from the Australian National University, and your thesis topic was measuring legal implementation of international human rights norms in the context of HIV/AIDS. Is that right?
That's correct, yes.
And you are the President of the ACT Human Rights Commission, and you also currently hold the role of Human Rights Commissioner.
That's correct.
And you have had this role with the ACT Human Rights Commission since the inception of the ACT Human Rights Act in 2004, is that right?
Yes, that's right.
Would it be fair to say that if we need to know anything about the way in which the Human Rights Act and the ACT has worked in practice, you're the person we need to speak to?
Thank you, yes.
Can I turn now to Karen Toohey? Commissioners, you have a copy of Miss Toohey's CV. Miss Toohey, you are currently the Discrimination, Health Services, Disability and Community Services Commissioner in the ACT.
I am.
And that role is part of the ACT Human Rights Commission?
It is.
And prior to taking up this role in 2016, you were the Deputy Commissioner of the Office of the Australian Information Commissioner between 2013 and 2016?
Yes, I was.
That is the Commonwealth Agency concerned with privacy, is that right?
It is.
And freedom of information?
And FYI, yes.
And before that, you were the Chief Executive Officer and for a time, the Acting Commissioner of the Victorian Equal Opportunity and Human Rights Commission?
I was.
And your time at the Victorian Human Rights Commission coincided with the early stages of the Victorian Charter of Rights coming into operation and the responsibilities for the Victorian Commission in working with the Human Rights Charter, is that right?
Yes, it is.
And so you have experienced, if the Commissioners need to ask you, about the way in which Victoria has approached the dialogue model of human rights and the role of a commission such as the Victorian Commission in that process?
Yes, particularly, as you say, the interface between a Human Rights Charter or a Human Rights Act and discrimination law.
While we keep on the journey of your experience with various Human Rights Commissions, you are also a long-term employee with the Australian Human Rights Commission. And one of your particular responsibilities for a time at the Australian Human Rights Commission is that you had oversight of all of the complaint handling in relation to the Disability Discrimination Act. Is that right?
I did, for many years.
That meant that you had a very sort of firsthand bird's eye view of the sorts of complaints that were coming to the Australian Human Rights Commission, raising allegations that the Disability Discrimination Act had been breached?
Yes, I started with the Commission early with the first Disability Discrimination Commissioner, Miss Elizabeth Hastings. And so I oversaw the Disability Discrimination Act certainly for its first 10 years of operation.
And the nature of those complaints were not confined to just complaints about government bodies or the Australian Government, is that right?
No, the Discrimination Act, as you are aware, operates with the private sector. So certainly across business, education, accommodation, all those areas of public life, I've been managing those complaints for many years across all those sectors.
And in your current role as the Discrimination, Health Services, Disability and Community Services Commissioner, you still have this frontline role in addressing complaints that come to the Commission?
I do. I have a small team with a big jurisdiction. And I think, as I've outlined, we are fortunate to have expanded that jurisdiction to not just handle discrimination claims, but the ACT Government has recently enacted provisions to enable us to deal with abuse, neglect and exploitation of people with a disability. We still work in the disability services space. I certainly deal with disability-related matters in my health services role. So I think, again, we've got a broad remit, and I've got a very close eye on those matters.
So the topics that I wanted to ask you both is to assist the Royal Commission to have an understanding about some models for the process of taking international human rights and bringing them into a domestic setting. The ACT was the first jurisdiction to undertake that exercise in a sense of looking at a package of international human rights and translating them into ACT law with the ACT Human Rights Act in 2004. Dr Watches, can I start with you? There was an interesting consultative process that led up to the enactment of the ACT Human Rights Act in 2004. Now, am I right in understanding that the Government established a Bill of Rights Consultative Committee?
That's correct. In 2002, the Consultative Committee was formed with the Chair, Professor Hilary Charsworth, who you would know as appointed to the International Court of Justice last Friday, Professor Larissa Barrett from UTS, Elizabeth Kelly from the Justice and Community Safety Director at ANP, and Penelope Leyland. So it operated for nine months, issued a issues paper, held town hall community meetings, had a deliberative poll at Old Parliament House, similar to the republic model, and it issued a report in 2003 with a draft Human Rights Bill that colored both civil and political rights as well as economic, social and cultural rights.
I wanted to ask you about the nature of the rights that were considered by the Consultative Committee. There was clearly no debate about there being what I described as civil and political rights being considered for an ACT Bill of Rights. There was no issue about civil and political rights, is that right?
That's correct. It was the norm in other jurisdictions such as the UK, New Zealand, Canada and the US.
When we're talking about civil and political rights, are we talking about some rights that might be described as freedoms? So we hear rights described as freedom of movement, freedom of assembly, freedom of expression. So they're part of civil and political rights, is that right?
That's correct, and COVID's brought that into stark relief. People during the Consultative Committee thought that a lot of our human rights came from American TV shows, whereas actually we have them in the ACT Victoria and Queensland at the local level.
And the nature of freedoms comes from this theory that if you just leave the person alone, then they can enjoy their rights. And there is a theory that sits behind some of these rights described as freedoms is that they don't really take much on the part of government to comply with because it's simply a matter of allowing people to exercise their freedoms. Have you heard that description of some of the freedoms in the civil and political rights model?
Sure, but there's that duty to respect, protect and fulfil, which encompasses the private sector as well and third parties.
The idea that civil and political rights can be achieved or complied with by simply doing very little has been debunked, hasn't it, at an international law level?
Absolutely.
And so even for civil and political rights, there is now an acceptance that that requires proactive action on the part of governments if governments wish to comply with civil and political rights?
Absolutely, and it's been taken seriously for a number of decades with discrimination legislation. But there are a lot of other civil and political rights apart from the right to equality.
Then if we look at the other category of economic, social and cultural rights, is it right that their genesis really came for being the types of rights that really required active government intervention, the commitment of resources and the establishment of systems? So these are rights like the right to work, the right to education, the right to the highest attainable standard of living, the right to health, rights of those kinds that might not be the types of rights that could be readily or easily enforced by courts. Is that a fair description of economic, social and cultural rights at a very high level?
Sure, and the reason they were split as opposed to being combined in the Universal Declaration was the Cold War between the USSR and Western States Parties.
And again, the more recent approach to human rights, or probably for the last 20 years or so, has been that civil and political rights, economic, social and cultural rights all fit together, that they are interrelated, indivisible and interdependent. That's the current approach at an international law level.
Yes, that is absolutely correct.
But would you accept that there have been some challenges in bringing that concept of indivisibility, interdependent, interrelated rights between civil and political, economic and social rights into Australia? But we still hold back a little bit in our domestic thinking of rights being split into civil, political on one hand, economic, social, cultural on the other hand?
There's definitely a reluctance about economic and social and cultural rights, and there is that international test of progressive realisation, which means you have to have immediate effect for non-discrimination. But in terms of resources, that's something that you progressively implement, you don't backslide, which is the principle we've been operating on. And economic, social, cultural rights have been added progressively to the Human Rights Act, but they weren't there in 2004.
In 2004, the Consultative Committee recommended that there be an ACT Bill of Rights that had both comprehensive protections for civil and political rights and also economic, social and cultural rights?
Yes, their bill had both.
And when the Consultative Committee presented its report to government, it was then for the ACT Government to decide what the form of the ACT Human Rights Act or Bill of Rights would look like, is that right?
Yes, they didn't agree with having economic, social and cultural rights at the beginning. And there was a general review clause of one in five years, and the Greens inserted an amendment to look at environmental and economic, social and cultural rights at a later stage.
And so the ACT Act at the present time does have some rights that we might broadly put in the basket of economic, social and cultural rights, is that right?
Yes, the right to education was introduced in 2009, I think, and the right to work in 2020. We're still working on having the rights to housing and health, the two that we would prioritise.
And one of the other suggestions or recommendations from the Consultative Committee was to think about the nature of an effective remedy. And the concept of effective remedy appears in the international conventions such as the International Covenant on Civil and Political Rights. And was it the case that the Consultative Committee thought one of the effective remedies should be the right to take a claim that breaches of the ACT Act could be enforceable by courts? So a process of having those rights subject to court oversight?
Absolutely.
Put it in plain English.
That's the UK model of having a direct right of action to the Supreme Court. So unfortunately, that wasn't in the 2004 bill that the Government introduced, and it was passed in 2004. But the 2006 review recommended that that be included, and 2009, it did become law that we had a direct right of action that doesn't exist in either Victoria or Queensland.
And does the concept of direct right of action also include the powers for a court to award particular remedies, either changes in policies and practices or damages if there's been a breach of rights?
Sure, there are a range of remedies, declaration being probably the main one, but damages are not available.
Has that been...
Except in very limited circumstances.
The lack of damages for breaches of rights being an impediment in the ACT in terms of rights protection?
I think it's contributed to a reluctance of the profession and perhaps even academics bringing actions in the Supreme Court. There's probably been more activity at a lower level in terms of NGOs and community legal centres. And of course, our own complaints work and other casework where we integrate human rights in our decision-making.
Now, I wanted to come and ask Miss Toohey shortly about whether other mechanisms for making complaints about human rights, for example, in a discrimination law framework, might be another pathway to remedies. Before I do that, can I finish off with the ACT's steps to introduce the ACT Human Rights Act? The Committee looked at a range of models from other jurisdictions, the US, the UK, Canada and also South Africa. But the decision was made to proceed with the model reflecting the model in the UK being a model that's commonly called a dialogue model. Is that the approach the ACT took?
Yes, it's an ordinary act of parliament like the UK, and the dialogue model was felt to uphold the rule of law by having the dialogue between the three arms of the Westminster system.
So when we talk about the three arms of the Westminster system or the three arms of government, we're talking about Parliament, in the ACT's case, the Legislative Assembly. We're talking about the judiciary and the court system, and we're talking about the public service, sometimes referred to as the executive. They're the three branches?
Yes, they're the three.
And is the Human Rights Commission part of the executive or the public service? Or does the ACT Human Rights Commission fit into that dialogue model in a slightly different way?
I'd say we fit into the model in a slightly different way. We certainly engage with the Legislative Assembly, and there's a power to intervene in court cases. But a lot of the dialogue happens within the executive. We're independent statutory office holders, so we are independent of government. But we do see draft cabinet submissions, so that is a process for any policy and lawmaking before it gets to the Legislative Assembly. And that's probably where we have our greatest input, but it's not seen because of that process being confidential.
So can I, I wanted to ask you now about what has been the experience in the ACT working with a dialogue model? And to draw on both your experience in this exercise of translating international rights into a local setting in the ACT. So can I start with the rights, and can I open this up for both of you? We look at the ACT Human Rights Act, and the Commissioners have a copy in the bundle. I won't go through every right, but the language used in the ACT Act in part takes the language from the international conventions, particularly the International Covenant on Civil and Political Rights, and brings that into the ACT law. So the first thing is how has the ACT addressed this exercise of taking international law concepts, which we heard yesterday can sometimes be vague and aspirational in their terms, to actually give it some meaning in the ACT? And I think this is an area that both of you work with in terms of working with the Act in the roles that you have in reviewing material, giving advice to government and conducting your own inquiries. How do you go about that exercise of working out the meaning of the rights in the ACT Human Rights Act?
The value of using the international treaties is that means that we have access to jurisprudence both at the international level of the Human Rights Committee, but also regional systems such as the UK participates in the European Court of Human Rights. At the local level, that's translated by having obligations in each arm of the Westminster system. So in terms of the legislature, the Attorney General must issue a compatibility statement for all government bills, and that's a filter for checking whether limitations are proportioned under Section 28. The Scrutiny of Bills Committee has a role, looking at pre-enactment scrutiny. And there's been a lot of activity, as you'll see in a report we did called Look Who's Talking in 2014, showing that actually there's been a lot more action.
Because I want to ask you specifically about these, each arm of government and its responsibilities and how parliamentary scrutiny operates in the ACT. But the starting point has to be, doesn't it, how do you work out the meaning of these rights? So it doesn't matter whether you're in the Parliament, in the courts, in the executive, in the ACT Human Rights Commission. If you've got these human rights in the Act, you've got to work out what they mean. And so I'd be interested from the Commission's perspective, how do you work out the meaning of these rights for the ACT?
So the international covenants are a starting point, but the case law and general comments like the Human Rights Committee, where we look to to give substance to how that's implemented in practice. My colleague, Commissioner Toohey, which wished to add more.
Yeah, look, I think that's a complex process, and I think that's one of the issues that we deal with on an ongoing basis in the jurisdictions that have a Human Rights Act. There's a very small number of people who understand the international law, the international conventions, and the extent, I think, of the interpretation of those provisions. Part of, I think, where discrimination law comes into it is it is a vehicle to move the translation of those laws and the case law into day-to-day parlance. That's not an easy job. Having spent over 20 years trying to do that with business, small business educators, service providers, I think the more that we can do to provide equals for people to understand that human rights is not out there somewhere in this tower of ideology. It's actually about day-to-day events, day-to-day barriers that people experience. You know, the more we will be able to create a safe and inclusive community. I think, you know, we have some excellent expertise in the Commission here that is able to do that and stays across the international case law. Certainly, all the Commissions do, but that's a very small pool of people. So I think one of the challenges is how do we move, you know, the very meaningful work that is done at an international level and through the conventions into day-to-day legislation or day-to-day communications that everyone finds accessible?
I'm sorry to interrupt, but can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
You've referred to international law and practice and expertise. How does that help you, for example, in relation to Section 16.2? Everyone has the right to freedom of expression. This right includes the freedom to receive and impart information and ideas of all kinds, regardless of borders and so on. As you know, the conflict between freedom of expression and other rights is endemic and pervasive in Australia. How do you, how does international law and expertise help you work out whether ACT law infringes Section 16.2, such as the law of defamation?
An interesting example of this in practice was the federal government's push to claw back anti-vilification legislation, not just at the federal level, but also at local level. And we worked with the community to show the impact of racial vilification had on an everyday basis and backed that up with international jurisprudence. And that clawing back of the legislation did not happen, but I'm worried that it's still on the horizon if there was some kind of consolidation and lowest common denominator with anti-discrimination within Australia.
Is it sometimes sort of difficult when the rights are expressed at that very high and general level in the Act to actually work out exactly when and how might they apply? Has that been a challenge in the ACT in terms of understanding the content of the rights?
Certainly, in the beginning, it was a difficulty, but just the process of scrutinising new laws shows that it can happen in practice, and that's been something that's developed in the legislature that particularly the opposition, who initially wanted to repeal the Human Rights Act, now use it on an everyday basis to criticise government action or inaction. And going through clause by clause in new legislation or amendments to old legislation to see if that complies with the standards in the Human Rights Act, using general comments, using case law at the international level, and also now there's more jurisprudence in Victoria and more jurisprudence starting in Queensland, which actually gives teeth and substance to showing what the content of those rights are in practice by the government regulating everyday things like COVID legislation is a good example.
And that the Act itself, I think in Section 31, places a focus on international law and the judgements of foreign and international courts and tribunals as being relevant to a human right when interpreting that human right for the purpose of the ACT and the ACT Act. So has the experience in the ACT been one of looking to international law or overseas jurisprudence, sorry, by jurisprudence?
Definitely.
Court cases and outcomes of court decisions?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Looking at that jurisprudence either at the high level, like general comments of UN committees or case law and jurisdictions like the UK or New Zealand and Canada. Where it's most highlighted is where if we seek leave to intervene in a matter, and there's been about twenty cases in the Supreme Court and the ACT Administrative and Civil Tribunal is the local profession doesn't have access to that jurisprudence. So if we intervene, we're able to plug that gap in, and that gives confidence to the parties. And we assist the court in making a determination.
And the, one of the questions for interpreting the laws is when and how there might be any limits on, on the rights. And some of the rights in the ACT Act have inbuilt limitations. But there's also a broad limitation clause in the ACT Act. So the Act says, human rights may be subject only to reasonable limits set by laws that can be demonstrably justified in a free and democratic society. And then there's a list of factors that are taken into account. Ms. Tui, in the work that you do, do you have to look at a right and a limitation together? And you might speak of this also from your experience in Victoria about these broad limitation clauses and how they sit with an understanding of rights.
Yeah, we cer- we certainly do have to look at, at those together. And I think, again, sometimes that's part of that translation process of understanding the right and how it's limited, but also why it's limited. I think we've seen over the, certainly over the development of the jurisprudence in Victoria and in the ACT, particularly more recently. You know, a much more mature approach to that consideration. I think, as we know, there's certainly initially in Victoria, the experience with the courts was a complex conversation, if I can put it that way. That's matured as the, as the legislation has been used more and more frequently. And as there's been a greater acceptance of, of reference to international jurisprudence. I think certainly in my day-to-day dealings, dealing with housing or dealing with education, trying to articulate how the, how the right and the limitation sits together can be difficult. And again, if we move to how that looks in discrimination law, looking at unjustifiable hardship and how that fits against a right and how that's been, how the assessment of that has, again, evolved over many years. I think, I think what we understand is that some of the concrete ways that discrimination law expresses those provisions has not been sufficiently referenced back to those original, the right limitation. And so I think there is, you know, as you say, there is an emerging maturity in, in that space. But it is still developing and we certainly need, I think, agencies like the ACT Commission and the Victorian Commission to continue to act in that intervention space to develop that case law.
Right, I want to turn then to the three arms of government and the experience in the ACT. And I'm interested to know what you think has worked well, but also if there've been any challenges or impediments in this model. So the first let's deal with is scrutiny. So when the Attorney General is required to present a bill to the Legislative Assembly, it's the Attorney General's role to prepare a written statement called a compatibility statement. And the Attorney General has to express an opinion as to whether the bill is consistent with human rights. But if it is not consistent with the human rights in the ACT Act, the Attorney General also has to say why that's the case. So that then compatibility statement is the important first step. Is that right?
It's an absolute filter. And in over seventeen years of the Human Rights Act, there haven't been incompatible bills that have got to that stage. There have, of course, been early drafts that we've said have been incompatible and have been changed by the executive. Whereas if you look in Victoria, there've been four bills expressly acknowledged as incompatible in two thousand and sixteen, fifteen and seventeen, and they've got an override declaration where an individual serving a life sentence has been not compatible with human rights. And that's done expressly. We don't have an override provision in the ACT.
But the objective of the compatibility statement is before a law even makes its way into the system of the members of the Legislative Assembly considering the law, let's check that the law, proposed law, is going to be compatible or consistent with human rights. That's the, the purpose of the compatibility statement.
Yes, and it's centralised through the Attorney General. In other jurisdictions, it's the minister responsible. And there's different theories about which way is preferable. I found in the ACT, having it centralised, particularly with the initial Attorney General being the Chief Minister, John Stannock, who sponsored the, the Human Rights Act, that wayward directorates were more likely to buckle under when they knew that that assessment may be missing if they, they didn't take the advice on compatibility early.
And, and the process of the compatibility statement and then the role of a standing committee that addresses human rights when bills are presented. You've written about this in the book on lawmaking and human rights. And we've got for the commissioners, your chapter on the experience of the ACT parliamentary scrutiny. Has this been one of the successes of the ACT Human Rights Act?
I think the success definitely has been in the legislature and the executive. And the Look Who's Talking report we did in two thousand and fourteen showed in seven bills, there are actually a hundred government amendments loosely attributed to scrutiny of human rights. But in three years since, there are actually thirty amendments to seven bills. So that was the high watermark of where the government did changes according to scrutiny committee reports. In Victoria, there've been eight amendments in eight years. So it, it's a very, very different impact compared to the ACT.
Right, turning to the next arm of government, which is the executive or the public sector. In the ACT, it's referred to as obligations on public authorities. And the public authorities are quite broad in the ACT. It's not just public servants. It's also a minister, it may be a police officer or any entity whose functions include functions of a public nature when exercising those functions for the territory or a public authority, whether under contract or not. Can I just ask you there, does that start to build the concept of public authority around performing a public function rather than simply the status of being a public entity? Does that make sense?
Yes, it's meant that the functionality test means it's much broader than other jurisdictions and that's brought in community housing providers. There've been ACAT decisions showing that they're public authorities. And that means they're operating on that human rights basis rather than a charity basis.
And the ACT describes a function of a public nature to include the operation of detention places, correctional centres, but also the provision of some core services, gas, electricity, water supply, emergency services, public health, public education, transport and housing. That sounds very much like the Economic, Social and Cultural Rights Framework. Ms. Tui?
It does sound very much like the ACT rights. And, and I think, again, it, it's certainly one of the things that I've seen in, in the ACT is that the breadth of that public authority obligation assists us greatly in dealing with our complaints. So when we have a discrimination complaint or a vulnerable person complaint against one of those providers, it also means that we can raise with them and ask them to explain how they've taken into account their public authority obligations and what consideration they've given to human rights in making their decisions.
One of the steps taken in the ACT when the Act first came into operation was to say, we have to do more than just have the law. We've also got to build the culture and build awareness and education for the public authorities to know and understand their obligations. What has been the ACT's experience in terms of the awareness of rights and an understanding of rights in public authorities? Dr. Watchers, maybe you can comment on that one?
Sure, I think there has been a, a big change and maturing over time of awareness of human rights. But in terms of commitment, that's been the one that takes the longest to develop. And to me, that's demonstrated by the amount of resources devoted to human rights. And I'd have to say that would be the biggest challenge that the ACT faces. There's only been two lawyers in my team for the last seventeen years doing all that work of auditing places of detention, the intervention work in courts and tribunals and looking at draft cabinet submissions and making submissions to Legislative Assembly committees such as the recent one on COVID.
And for public authorities, sorry, yes.
Oh, I was, I was just going to say, I think the other element of that is remembering that it's constant maintenance. You can't, you can't have that discussion once with organisations. It's, it's got to be a constant conversation with them, particularly in organisations like housing or health, where it's not the first thing that staff think of when they're making decisions. And so how do we get it to be, you know, a framework that they turn to when they're making decisions about people's rights? And so I, I think it's really important just to remember there is that need for a constant maintenance in that space, not just a one-off conversation or, or training at induction, something like that.
The, the Act says it's unlawful for a public authority to act in a way that's incompatible with human rights and in making a decision to fail to give proper consideration of a relevant human right. That's, that surely must be some motivation for a public authority to know that they would be acting unlawfully if they didn't act compatibly with human rights. Doesn't that demand that there is a high level of knowledge and understanding of the rights in the ACT Act?
It demands it, but I, I, I think one of the issues that we have there obviously is the remedy. And so I, I think while that may be, you know, common knowledge at a senior level, again, many decisions in the public service are made, you know, by frontline staff on a day-to-day basis with limited resources. And so I very much agree that there is an obligation there. I think one of the things, and Helen has certainly been advocating for a human rights complaint mechanism, so that we, we have got better accountability mechanisms. Sorry, Helen.
Yeah, it's really the consequences of non-compliance that I think motivates public authorities. So if they know they're going to be taken to Supreme Court, which is more likely to happen in a prison situation where there's, you know, that is the most serious limitation on human rights, detaining someone twenty-four hours a day. And police, although it is a contract between ACT Police and federal police, so they're not subject to the Discrimination Act, but they are an express public authority. We've intervened in a number of police cases, but they've all settled. So we don't have express case law on that in the ACT. An interesting study was the Order to Generals in two thousand and nineteen of implementation of the Human Rights Act, and it found gaps in the justice departments, particularly in the community correction space about implementing human rights on an everyday level in terms of training and access to materials. So that's something that's been worked on in the last two years and there will be online training. There are new fact sheets that have been issued by the Justice Directorate. The other change has been in last year, the ACT adopted a wellbeing framework based on the New Zealand model, and there are twelve domains with a hundred measures and fifty-six indicators. And University of Canberra conducts a Living Well in the ACT survey every two years, and human rights are incorporated in that survey. But there is a need to refine that methodology and compare data over time. It's only four thousand people in the last survey that was recently conducted. So that's one way to assess compliance in terms of what people's knowledge of human rights are and how they're experienced on an everyday basis, particularly vulnerable people, including people with disability and Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people.
What sorts of cases has the commission intervened in? You mentioned a number of cases involving the police. What sort of cases? I don't, I don't mean each one individually, but are they cases that involve proceedings under the the Act or are they other sorts of cases?
The other cases not brought on to the Human Rights Act, but we've intervened. One was in relation to two police assaulting young people on Australia Day in two thousand and seventeen, but that case settled. Another case, Thompson and Andrews, settled in the High Court. That was where there was a breach of bail and the power of police to enter premises without an express legislative provision. So we lost that case in the Supreme Court of Appeal. So we took it to the, legal aid took it to the High Court and that case was settled. So I take that as an indicator that it may have won in the High Court is why that case settled. And also confiscation of criminal assets where there've been a family home and children living in that home, where we've intervened in those cases have similarly settled.
Okay, had there been any cases in which the Supreme Court has been asked to give relief under section forty, capital C, subsection four, which provides that in a proceeding of a particular kind, the Supreme Court may grant the relief it considers appropriate, except damage?
Sure, the most famous case is one of Eastman, where seven million dollars was awarded for an unlawful conviction. There've been other cases about unlawful.
Specific provision, isn't there, that allows for compensation in the event of an unlawful conviction?
That's correct, an unlawful detention, but otherwise damage is not, is not available. And there are cases of, we intervened in a case called Morrow Inn in Ahara's Head, where it was only common law damages that were available in that case.
The section, just as a matter of interest, section forty, C, subsection four, only removes damages from the range of relief that a court may grant. I would have thought that the Supreme Court pursuant to that section could grant all, all manner of relief that might be.
Absolutely, it's very flexible. And there've been a, a number of declarations. The most recent case is one of Davidson against the Director General of Justice and Community Safety just this year, where a detainee developmental health issues by not having access to the legislated one hour a day of open air and exercise. He was given access to a, a small cell at the back of his cell rather than a, a general exercise yard that was provided.
Was in the nature of a mandatory injunction or something like that?
Yes, it was found that the action was unlawful of the, the prison.
Stop because Ms. Eastman will get angry at me for interfering in the judicial side of things.
Well, I was up to that part, but in terms of if there's an allegation that a public authority has engaged in conduct that would be unlawful because it's acted in a way incompatibly with human rights or failed to give proper consideration. The question of determining unlawfulness brings in the third arm from the dialogue model, which is the role of the court. And it's right, isn't it, that the ACT has given that role to the ACT Supreme Court, not to the Magistrates Court, not to other lower-level tribunals?
That's correct. There is a, a open question about how much it binds lower courts in making findings about human rights. And we did intervene in a case before the Supreme Court called LM and the Children's Court in two thousand and fourteen on that issue. And we have recommended that be made clear in the legislation so that it can be applied in the more everyday cases. But as we said earlier, a complaints mechanism would be much more acceptable and effective than requiring people go to the Supreme Court or to add on human rights to existing causes of action in ACAT and the Magistrates Court.
And the nature of the Supreme Court's role seems to be to determine whether, as a matter of fact, there's been incompatible action with human rights. But also a review function to look at the way in which a decision has been made and to determine whether there's been proper consideration. So in those two functions, how strong has the Supreme Court been in addressing human rights in the ACT? Does it sit at the same, in the same way as the experience in the Legislative Assembly? Or in the way the executive perform their duties with human rights? How's the court fitting into that?
No, definitely the court has been the last player to engage and And I think some of the difficulty is that inaccessibility of international jurisprudence on human rights that mean we usually use interstate counsel to argue cases when we intervene. So there've been over three hundred cases, I think about three hundred and twenty, where the Human Rights Act's been mentioned in the Supreme Court or Court of Appeal. But as I said, there's only been about twenty cases where we've intervened, where it's been a determinative issue.
There is another role, isn't there, for courts and tribunals and the justice system in relation to this Act? And that comes back to the question of interpretation. Is the Act requires anybody who's working with territory laws to interpret as far as it is possible to do so and consistently with the purpose of a territory law in a way that's compatible with human rights? Is that something that you see happening regularly across courts and tribunals?
Certainly, but as I said, it's probably more common in the executive and the Legislative Assembly that they get, that that's an interpretive obligation. And in the initial two thousand and four Human Rights Act, that's all there was. There wasn't a direct right of action till two thousand and nine. So that did embed the interpretive provision, that, that was the main mechanism of the Act.
And, and is the jurisprudence from the courts and tribunals something that assists in your work in interpreting human rights for the ACT? Does it inform the Legislative Assembly's role and/or the border executive and public authorities? So has the court had a, courts had a force in that? Do they help?
The courts definitely help, and it makes a difference in an individual case. And of course, then there's the normative effect of similar cases that could be brought, that the executive will then take that into account. So the example of the case I gave of Davidson, where detainees were only allowed in the back of their cells for an hour's exercise every day, that was changed to they have to be taken, these people on discipline to an open exercise yard, as that is a requirement in the Corrections Act, and to not follow that is a breach of human rights. And at international law, that's a commonly recognised right of having that one hour outdoor exercise and fresh air.
The Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disability came after the ACT Act, and the ACT Act doesn't make any express reference to the rights of people with disability in the Human Rights Act. Does the ACT Act do anything in terms of bringing the CRPD rights into the ACT?
I think more so at the, less at the Supreme Court level and more at the ACAT level. So we've intervened in a number of guardianship cases that looks at what the test is for incapacity, a number of mental health matters, housing, planning, and discrimination cases. But Commissioner Tuohy may wish to expand on that.
Is, Tuohy, is it that the case that when we're looking at perhaps a discrete cohort, people with disability and some of those border economic, social and cultural rights, that the Human Rights Act works and needs to work with other legislation, discrimination legislation and the legislation for which you have responsibility in?
Yeah, I think certainly in terms of, you know, as Helen, as Doctor Witches has indicated, the right to equality and some of those other rights. We certainly use those in negotiations with, for example, again, housing, housing providers, health providers, in looking at the discrimination provisions around people with disability. I'd have to say that it's a, while the CRPD, as you say, came later, it's certainly a point of reference for us in terms of being able to articulate what the right to equality looks like, for example, for people with a disability. It was certainly when we were looking at the amendments to the legislation to enable us to take complaints around abuse, neglect and exploitation of people with a disability, it was certainly one of the discussion points then. So while it's being interpreted through the lens of the other rights, it's certainly part of the ongoing conversation that we have in, in using it to articulate what the Discrimination Act means or what some of these other provisions that we have mean.
I'm conscious of the time, the commissioners may have some questions for you. Our focus in the Royal Commission is not the whole suite of human rights. Our focus is on the rights of people with disabilities. We have to be guided by the CRPD, and our focus is on violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation of human rights. Reflecting on the ACT's experience of the Human Rights Act, is this a law that is effective in guaranteeing the rights of people with disability to live free from violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation? I don't know who wants to take that first.
I, I think it's had some impact.
Go on, Doctor Witches.
I think it's had some impact, but not so much in the courts. Therefore, we've been on a campaign to introduce a complaints mechanism that is in the two thousand and nineteen Queensland Act and has shown that it works. And a lot of those complaints are taken in parallel with the discrimination complaint in the ACT that would work at a much deeper level, given the breadth of Ms. Tuohy's jurisdiction, particularly for vulnerable people being exposed to exploitation, neglect and abuse. Law can't be a magic bullet for fixing complex social problems, but having a complaints mechanism would reduce that energy and resources and expense of having Supreme Court litigation, which is out of reach to vulnerable people, and I would have thought even more out of reach to people with disability, having lower economic, social and cultural rights in terms of education, work and housing. So their vulnerability to lift them up, I think a complaints mechanism, currently it's of course Australia-wide that it's the most ground of discrimination compared to any other cohort. So having a Human Rights Act mechanism, I think would amplify that. Thank you.
Ms. Tuohy?
Yeah, I, I agree with Doctor Witches' comments that the law isn't the be-all and end-all in terms of resolving some of these complex issues. I think the ACT has made a good effort in giving us a breadth of jurisdiction that enables us to go into lots of, lots of parts of people's lives that in some other jurisdictions, our sort of organisation doesn't have that remit. I think what, one of the other things that it enables us to do is to reframe a lot of those issues as human rights issues. And so I think particularly in that space of abuse and neglect and exploitation, it's given us a vehicle to deal with providers, to deal with families, to deal with service providers, education providers, again, to reframe some of the behaviours that we see or some of the actions that we see into abuse or neglect. Like, so for example, if my house is inaccessible or my bathroom's inaccessible, we're getting to a point now where we can say, well, if the modifications aren't made within a, a period of time, that might actually be abuse or neglect. And so it, it's giving us a vehicle to deal with some of those issues. I think we would certainly like to see better remedies, so pathways to enforcement in particular. But, but I think, as I said, the ACT has made a strong claim on using the law to the extent that we can, and then giving us the vehicle to be able to talk to a whole range of other people in community about what, what the law means for them on a day-to-day basis.
Commissioners?
Commissioner Ryan, do you have any questions?
Yeah, look, I'm convinced that you've made an impact in the areas that lawyers like to congregate on in, say, the areas of justice and amending legislation and things of that sort of-
Commissioner Ryan was only speaking for himself when he refers to congregating.
I'm really interested, I, I, I'm really interested in the sort of ubiquitous human rights that the Commission regularly has presented to us in submissions and other things like the right to keep my child in school that I'm happy with, the right not to be suspended from school because of my disability, the rights, for example, restrictive practice in a group home. Are you able to, you, have you been able to use this dialogue method to have an impact on those areas? And I noticed a lot of the opportunities to intervene in that area are complaints-based. So you were able to publish what you do in a way that enables the community to learn from what you do. I know that's two questions, but I'm sort of interested in, as I said, the, it, it's very, the sort of stuff that comes to the Commission is incredibly every day, and I am interested to see how that system you've been talking about might intervene in, in much more ordinary parts of people's lives.
Yeah, look, and, and certainly both in restrictive practice and in education, they are a significant component of the work that I do, both from a discrimination perspective and also a disability service commissioner perspective. I think the Commission, again, has been able to inform other parts of ACT Government. So for example, in the restrictive practice space, as a result of some work that the Commission did earlier in the education area, the Senior Practitioner was established. That has a, that has a very practical day-to-day impact for people in terms of their day-to-day lives. I think because the human rights framework applies at that scrutiny level when those other parts of government are developing policy or law, that we're able to bring those issues right to the fore in those discussions. And so, again, things around suspension and exclusion, we are working with the Education Directorate at the moment on expanding their reporting mechanisms into the private sector to, to articulate those sorts of issues. So I think while the, while, you know, the, the legislative process and the court process is one thing, we very much use the complaint mechanism and the, and what we call the reporting mechanism. So people raising issues with us that they don't necessarily want to bring a complaint about, but they do want us to do something about it. So we've got very broad own motion investigation powers, we've got quite broad inquiry powers, we're able to make public recommendations and then follow those through in, in the public domain. So I think we've, we've got a very broad remit of powers and functions that enable us to both deal with individual complaints in a confidential manner when required, but also to do that more systemic work, which is so incredibly important.
Commissioner McKeon?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I kind of have, I have two parts to this issue. The first one is, as Ms. Eastman pointed out, the CRPD came after the ACT Act. And given that the CRPD would develop in response to the lack of references or very little reference to disability in previous human rights treaties, do you think that the ACT Act, if it had come after, could have been strengthened on the base of, on the basis of the CRPD? Do you have a view on that? And my question is to both of you.
Certainly, there could be a mechanism to have it as an appendix to the Human Rights Act, but I think we have got that general provision of interpreting human rights under section thirty-one, and we do routinely refer to the Convention that way. But in terms of more awareness of the, the treaty, then I don't think that's a bad thing. I think probably where we're focused on is the complaints mechanism. There's currently a petition before Parliament that closes this week that will look at a complaints mechanism, that it will go to a scrutiny committee to see whether that's taken up as a law reform issue. And also the economic, social and cultural rights, because it's there that the biggest gap for people with disability. So having not just work and education, but also having housing and health incorporated in the Human Rights Act, the right to health is in the, although in a limited form in the Queensland Act. So there is a precedent for having it, and I think that would make a, a practical difference on the ground. If I can refer to Commissioner Tuohy.
Yeah, completely agree that Convention came after, but I think, you know, because the Act, the Human Rights Act is fairly flexible, we are able to use the CRPD in a, on a day-to-day basis in terms of how we look at disability discrimination claims. And I think in the same way that the Disability Discrimination Act predated the Convention, that the two interface in a way that allows you to use the Convention to interpret what you're doing and what you're looking for in terms of the Discrimination Act. I think the difficulty comes, as, as you know, Commissioner, when it, when it gets to court. And so there, there's a whole piece of judicial education that we need to do in that interpretation space with some of the new Conventions and the expectations they set.
One thing I, I didn't mention was the Disability Justice Strategy that came out last year. That's something we've been fighting for, for over five or six years. And having people whose job it is to do it on a daily basis in the police force, in the courts, in corrections, in DPP, and even in the Human Rights Commission in the, the victims' area, means that that's what brings human rights home by having the resources to actually implement it in practice with express reference to Convention on the Right to People with Disabilities.
Thank you. One final comment, and it relates to the dialogue, the dialogue project that we talked about earlier, and that is, do you think, again, the lack of disability rights being embedded in Human Rights Treaty prior to the CRPD has had an impact on the level of awareness and conversation that you have with the, you know, the ACT Government about building in disability rights into that broader human rights conversation and progressing the human rights in the ACT?
I think it's not a level, an issue at the higher level. I think there's very high awareness by ministers and directorates. It's really the frontline people making decisions and particularly functional public authorities, where it may be a housing provider or a private school having public authority obligations. And if I could refer to Commissioner Tuohy about how that happens in practice.
Yeah, I, I think, again, as Doctor Witches has indicated, there's a very high level of awareness of issues around inclusion and diversity, particularly around people with disability in the ACT. We have a very active Office for Disability, which has got responsibility for implementing the Disability Justice Strategy that Doctor Witches mentioned. I think there is, there is always room to improve. And I think, so for example, the ACT is looking at a Multicultural Recognition Act at the moment, which is very much about expressing the positive obligation on government and the private sector in the multicultural space and to, you know, articulate the fair and inclusive community messaging the government wants. That will interact with the Discrimination Act, but it doesn't displace it. And I think those sorts of models are, are really, you know, something that could be looked at in terms of how do we articulate and express what's in the CRPD in a way that speaks to all of community, but doesn't seek to displace something like a Discrimination Act, which provides the mechanism for redress or remedy.
Thank you both of you.
And you might be aware the Discrim Act's being reviewed at the moment. There was a Law Reform Advisory Council report of two thousand and fifteen. First part was implemented, but not the second. And positive duty based on the Victorian model would be very effective for that.
Has the Commission sought an amendment to the legislation to enable it to bring proceedings in its own right under the Act?
Under the Human Rights Act, no, but we have asked for the leave provision to be, to have an automatic right to appear as, as is the case in Victoria, and for the notification provision to be broadened. Currently, we're not required to be notified whether the territory is a party. And of course, they're the exact cases we want to be notified of, public authorities. So there have been some cases that we have missed.
And when you intervene in proceedings, how do you pay for that?
Currently, we give the bill to the government solicitor, but that looks like it may be changing. Other jurisdictions, Human Rights Commissions have their own budget, which is quite limited. So there's only one or two cases a year. So I suspect that may be where we're heading, but at the moment, we just give all the bills to the government solicitor for counsel.
Thank you. I'll just ask whether any of the parties given leave to appear have any questions to, to ask. If not, then thank you, Doctor Witches, and thank you, Witches, I'm sorry, and thank you, Ms. Tuohy, for coming to give evidence today and for the very interesting discussion that we have had, which has been extremely informative, if I may say so. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I just need to tender some documents in relation to this session. These are the CVs of both Doctor Witches and Ms. Tuohy. And also to, I think we may include the tender of Doctor Witches' chapter in Law and Policy Making. So commissioners, these tenders will cover now five documents. So it's in addition to the one that you've got in your list. And they'll be marked Exhibit eighteen point thirteen. the one that you've got in your list, and they'll be marked Exhibit 18.13 through to 18.17. So we'll make some amendments to the tender list to reflect that.
Those documents can be admitted, and we note that the tender list will be accordingly amended. It's now nearly 10:45. When should we resume?
Well, the program for this morning, and we've gone over a little bit of time, is Professor Justine Nolan is waiting. We had hoped to start her evidence at 10:30. If we can press on with Professor Nolan before having a break.
Yes, we can press, we can press on. We might have to have a break before, much of a short break at some stage.
We will. If, I'll just check with everyone, if it's convenient, if you wish to take a short break, say of five minutes or so now.
I think it might be sensible.
As a comfort break for anyone who requires it, those following the proceedings.
Exactly.
More thinking, then I hope that that won't be an inconvenience to Professor Nolan.
We'll just adjourn for five minutes now and resume then at 10:50.
The Royal Commission is adjourned. The Royal Commission is resumed.
Yes, Mrs Eastman.
Thank you. Next witness is Professor Justine Nolan, and I hope she'll be on the screen in a moment. There she is. Professor Nolan, sorry to keep you waiting.
Yes, Professor Nolan, thank you very much for coming to give evidence to the Commission. I too apologize for keeping you waiting. We do tend to run over time from time to time, but thank you for appearing. And I'll now ask Ms Eastman to ask you some questions.
So Professor Nolan, can I introduce you? You are currently the Director of the Australian Human Rights Institute in the Faculty of Law and Justice at the University of New South Wales.
That's correct.
And you provided your CV to the Royal Commission, which sets out a long and extensive history of work in the area of human rights, but with a particular focus on human rights for corporations and specifically human rights in business.
That's correct. Yeah, my main research focus is on the interaction of human rights with business.
So this, in this panel, Commissioners, we want to understand how international human rights law and the CRPD can be incorporated into the policies and practices of businesses and essentially corporations, but other vehicles as well. They might be partnerships, they might be not-for-profits, they may be charities. For people with disability, their human rights are directly affected by businesses and corporations in all aspects of their lives. And so one of the questions for the Royal Commission is, how do we translate the CRPD rights beyond just the government sector, but into models that touch on businesses' obligations? So that's what I want to ask Professor Nolan about. So Professor Nolan, can I start with you? The starting point, of course, is that international human rights treaties are about obligations between state parties or obligations state parties have to international organisations like the United Nations. Is that right?
That's correct. Yep.
And that means that when a country takes on the international law obligations, it's not the case that those obligations have any direct impact on businesses or corporations.
That is correct. I mean, there is some academic dispute about this, direct and indirect, but what you've stated is the general assumption that the obligations fall directly on the states and then indirectly on the business. But when states undertake this obligation, they also undertake an obligation to protect individuals within their jurisdiction from human rights violations. And that would then include making sure that they are looking at the role and practice of non-state actors as part of that protection role.
And there's been an enormous amount of debate at the international human rights law level about what might be vertical integration of rights and horizontal integration of rights. So this has been a topic of some interest for decades. Is that right?
Yeah. And so that's sort of, you know, it's taking that question of how is it possible to assume that there are direct obligations on business? And the more standard mainstream view is that, as we said, that they fall on states and then states then have that role of ensuring that businesses within their jurisdiction also are respecting and protecting human rights. So, but there is some distinction around vertical and horizontal application around that. But there's also, you know, within the discourse, particularly in the last 20, 30 years, there's a much greater acceptance of corporations accepting responsibilities in relation to human rights. There's more discursive, sort of more divisive debate about whether they are obligations or responsibilities.
So before I come to ask you, and I'll ask you quite a few questions about the UN principles in terms of business and human rights. There is a much older and longstanding model, is there not, where the international law regime brings together employees, employers and government in what might be called a sort of tripartite model through the work of the International Labour Organisation. Is that right?
Yeah, so the, the International Labour Organisation, which predates the United Nations, is the only international body with this tripartite structure, where governments, employer representatives and employee representatives all have a say in basically a stake in the drafting of international treaties and policies dealing with international labour law. So it's a, it's an interesting and a great model because it ensures that worker representatives are also at the table when laws and policies are being drafted that directly affect them.
There's a large number of international labour organisation conventions, ILO conventions, that touch on quite a wide range of human rights in a workplace setting. So they might protect people in terms of work, health and safety. But we know that there are also specific conventions that touch on human rights. And one is an ILO convention, Triple One, on discrimination in employment and occupation. That, if we looked at, I'm not asking you for the detail of it, but if we look at that convention, essentially it's one that assumes that it's not just governments who are going to be affecting workers' rights in the field of employment, it's also going to be private sector employers. And that illustrates that sort of tripartite model of identifying the rights bearers, the duty holders, and then the obligation of government to make sure those rights translate into a local setting.
Yeah, so the, I mean, the ILO does this formally, and that's one of the treaties that you mentioned, that, where it's explicitly recognised. But particularly in the last 10 and 20 and 30 years, you've seen developments in the United Nations, within the OECD, which are bringing business and worker representatives informally into that picture as well. So the ILO is the only one who has that formalised structure, which when its treaties are drafted, have this sort of effect and have input from all these bodies. But we've seen a growing interest of the development of sort of guidelines, declarations that are geared towards the role of business and, and understand that business is essential to the development of policy and the implementation of policy, whether it's through the United Nations or the OECD as well. And, you know, we're seeing that in the current climate discussions that are being led by global leaders, but with very much the role of business and civil society, we're having a lot of weight there.
And we've seen, for example, the ILO conventions being brought into Australian law, for example, as schedules to the Australian Human Rights Commission Act through the operation of the Fair Work Act. We have seen examples, haven't we, in the area of employment and labour law, that the specific conventions can be incorporated in particular legislation to give effect to those international obligations?
Yeah, that's right. So Australia has a model whereby when we ratify an international treaty, we then have to adopt or amend domestic law to ensure to give effect to that international treaty. And to be fair, we do this on somewhat of an ad hoc basis, in part because we don't have a national Charter of Human Rights Act where this may be done in one hit. But we done it, we do it in various ways, whether it's through employment or discrimination law. I mean, we do it very well, often in discrimination law, Sex Discrimination Act, Disability Discrimination Act. But what we do sometimes then is pick and choose which parts of those international treaties are evident in domestic law. So some, the great Hilary Charlesworth once said that Australia has sort of a patchwork quilt approach to human rights, in that we, we grab pieces and string them all together rather than have them in one place. But we do do that, and you can see the effect of particularly some of the treaties of the ILO relevant to Australian domestic law.
Right. So I want to turn now to the United Nations' guiding principles on business and human rights. And they are described as the authority of global standards of outlining the expectations of states, the countries and businesses in preventing and addressing business-related human rights abuses. And these general principles were unanimously adopted by the United Nations Human Rights Council in 2011. And Australia was a co-sponsor of the principles, was it not?
Yeah, Australia was a strong supporter of these principles. And the idea around the principles is to look at the state obligations with regards to human rights and look at the role of companies and ensure that both companies and states' governments are working in a complementary fashion to ensure the respect of human rights, often primarily focused in the workplace, but not only that, it's a broader remit than that.
So I wanted to briefly ask you about the outline and the operation of the guiding principles, but then I'm very keen to explore with you how the principles have really worked on the ground and been effective or not over the last 10 years. So the guiding principles have three pillars. The first pillar is recognition that it's the nation's state or the country's duty to protect human rights. The second pillar is that businesses have responsibility also to respect human rights. And the third pillar is the need to ensure that there's access to. And the third pillar is the need to ensure that there's access to a remedy for business-related human rights harms. That's, is that at very high level, the three pillars that under sit the guiding principles? And can you tell us, you know, how or why that pillar approach is important?
So the guiding principles, as you noted, were adopted in 2011, but they're coming off sort of thirty or forty years of sort of agitation and activism and interest at an international and domestic level about the role of companies in working to ensure greater respect for human rights. And what the UN Special Representative did when he was drafting these was to not impose new obligations on countries, but basically to take their existing obligations, which are evidenced in the Human Rights Treaties or the International Labour Organisation Treaties that they've already ratified, confirm that they have those obligations and then introduce business as a complementary partner as a way of ensuring that there is greater respect for human rights in the workplace. So it's not an either-or, like the state does it and business doesn't do it, or business doesn't do it. Both have standalone responsibilities here, but what they're recognising is that they will be more effective when they work together as partners, because they're recognising that in many places around the world, business is actually more influential in some places than government. And so it's very important to think about how you both incentivise and encourage, but also demand in some cases that business respect human rights in the workplace and in the communities that they operate. And so the guiding principles very much sort of mainstreamed this intersection of human rights with business. And you would see that it's now in this field is the authoritative statement. And many businesses have themselves come out and said, you know, they are supportive and they apply it in their workplaces. And the Australian Government has consistently been a supporter of the UN Guiding Principles.
When we're talking about business, just so we're clear about who and what type of businesses are covered by pillar two. I think sometimes there's a misunderstanding that this only applies to businesses that are multinational corporations, those really big corporations that operate across many countries and have significant economic power. Are the guiding principles applicable to those corporations?
They are applicable to those corporations, but it was a very deliberate decision to ensure that all companies, small and medium-sized enterprises, multinational enterprises, all fall within the rubric of the guiding principles. So all businesses, whether public or private, and no matter what the size, have responsibilities to respect human rights. Because it's evidenced over, you know, sort of at least, you know, sort of the last three or four decades, when there's been a concerted effort to gather evidence of sort of abuses by corporations, that in order to make change, you need to involve sort of a plethora of companies and that every company can impact human rights in some way. And many of them have a really positive impact by providing jobs and paying taxes. But there is also, you know, a large number of companies of different sizes who have a negative impact on human rights.
So it's not just limited to the large global multinational corporations, but it could apply to all levels of business, including quite small businesses that operate in Australia?
Yeah, we've seen that, that, you know, very small companies. And the way that it is doing it is not trying to impose, you know, onerous obligations on companies, but saying, here's, you know, here's the gambit of human rights. And when you're looking at how you operate, you need to respect the individuals who are coming within your sort of sphere in many ways, as a basic way of doing business. So it is deliberately recognising that businesses of all shapes and sizes need to respect human rights.
So when we're talking about human rights, we're drawing on the International Human Rights Treaty framework. How do businesses understand those human rights, which are often described as the government's obligations, as even being applicable to them? Can you take us through the process of how business identifies what rights even apply to the particular business settings?
So the guiding principles refers to sort of internet, you know, the broad internationally recognised human rights, which at a minimum is the International Bill of Rights. So the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, the International Covenant on Economic, Social and Cultural Rights, and the International Covenant on Civil and Political Rights, and the sort of eight fundamental conventions of the ILO. But the UN Guiding Principles also explicitly notes that depending on the operations of the business, there would be other specific human rights, perhaps treaties or declarations that would be relevant to those who are impacted. So looking at the rights of indigenous people, or the rights of women, or the rights of migrant workers. The, the way that business might understand it, so over the last sort of ten years or so, in many ways, there's been an attempt to sort of translate the language of human rights as relevant to business. So while the whole ambit of internationally recognised human rights may be relevant, it is also acceptable to understand that business in certain circumstances may prioritise the operation of certain rights that are most relevant to their business. So for example, if a large mining company was looking at establishing a new mine, then it would be clear that the rights of indigenous people who might be in that area would be relevant. It also might appear that the right to health or the right to sort of water would also be relevant because they may impact that. Say versus a small company that's working in an urban setting and is setting up a garment factory. Those rights may be less relevant, but there would be rights around, particularly around the workplace, that would be most relevant to them. So there's flexibility and understanding that while all internationally recognised human rights might be considered, there is a way of prioritising and understanding which rights are most relevant to the particular operations of a business.
We're taking the Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities, the CRPD. Has that featured in the development of the guiding principles or had any special place in the guiding principles?
No, I mean, and in fact, the sort of the, the great shame of the sort of developments in the business and human rights sphere in the last, you know, ten years or so, is that there's a lack of explicit discussion around the rights of persons with disabilities. So the UN Guiding Principles were adopted five years after the CRPD. And it makes a sort of a, a very brief reference in sort of the commentary to the guiding principles, but not in the body of the principles themselves. And so you haven't seen the business and human rights movement really focus on these rights. And yet there is a, there is a great need to. So there's a generic assumption that they're relevant to the rights of persons with disability, but there's not an explicit focus on it within the guiding principles, other than a brief mention.
So guiding principles haven't, for example, incorporated some of the features that we see in the CRPD in terms of cross-cutting rights, the concept of transformative equality. Some of those quite CRPD-specific contexts, concepts haven't made their way into the guiding principles or into its sort of subsequent publications around how you apply the guiding principles over the last ten years.
No, and in many ways, the guiding principles are sort of a big-picture, top-down approach. And the critique that we're making around the lack of focus on the rights of disabilities, of the people with disabilities, would also be relevant, say, to the rights of migrant workers. So, you know, there's a glancing reference to them in the United Nations Guiding Principles as well, but no understanding of the specific context. And so concepts, you know, around reasonable accommodation or how you might apply the rights of persons with disabilities are not set out in the UN Guiding Principles. So it's a big picture, looking at how companies should operate, how companies might conduct human rights due diligence, in that they might understand and work out a way to understand which rights are most relevant, and then introduce those concepts. I've lost my lights, I'll just turn on my lights. Sorry about that.
Could we put it this way, that the absence of perhaps thinking about how disability fits into the guiding principles presents an opportunity?
A hundred percent. Yeah, and, and you, I, I think that's so true, that it's not an absence which means it's not relevant, it's an absence which actually means an opportunity to address it. And you could use the top-down guide as a way in to then look at, to focus on more specific issues. And that's what's being done in some areas, you know, that's sort of the approach taken with somehow looking at disclosures around climate, for example, using the big picture of the UN Guiding Principles to focus then business on how does this apply to this specific issue and what might we develop to ensure that there's improved implementation and respect for rights?
You've provided to the Commission a really interesting report published by the Human Rights Institute, but also in conjunction with the Australian Human Rights Commission on, at the crossroads, ten years of implementing the UN Guiding Principles on Business and Human Rights in Australia. So the Commissioners have that report, but that report doesn't touch on disability at all. And I assume that wasn't any deliberate omission. But does that sort of reflect that some of the priorities that have developed in the business and human rights area have followed particular issues that are relevant to some of the businesses that have really taken up the business and human rights principles? So for example, you mentioned the mining or extractive industries. They're quite big in looking at these principles. So you can see the influence of that take-up in the report. But disability is sort of not in there. And is that sort of also a reflection that we've got some work to do on the guiding principles in Australia in their application to disability?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, in many ways it is deliberate because we only picked up on four or five issues which are featured and which Australian companies are constantly grappling with in a public space. So issues around supply chains and modern slavery and informed consent around indigenous communities. So the fact that business is not grappling with how their disability rights are relevant to them largely means that it's really not on most of their radar. So it is an opportunity to focus on, to focus on that and, and look at how you apply these general principles to other areas. And so it's very much an area which is under addressed in Australia.
Well, the two, two areas I want to ask you coming out of the report that you acknowledge that there needs to be progress would be embedding human rights due diligence into business practice and ensuring access to a remedy for a victim. So taking those two areas and applying the principles, how would that work in practice? Because if it's, that could apply to disability, couldn't it, that area?
Yep.
So what would be the steps through for a business that touched on the day-to-day lives of people with disability? What would we be asking those businesses to do if the businesses were acting consistently with the guiding principles? How would that work?
So the concept of human rights due diligence is something that the UN Guiding Principles introduced into this sort of context of business and human rights. Obviously, the concept of due diligence in the legal field has been around, you know, forever. But it's more commonly considered in the context often of corporate due diligence, looking at the risks to the companies. So human rights due diligence is a process where business looks at the risks it poses to others, as opposed to sort of an inward focus looking. And it's a concept that's getting a lot of traction at the moment globally, and the EU has recently announced that it's going to introduce a EU-wide human rights due diligence law that would require companies within the EU to conduct human rights due diligence. So what does that mean? Essentially, it's putting companies on notice that they have to sort of identify, track, report, and then if needed, remediate problems where they're negatively impacting human rights. Because the theory is that if you're not identifying and tracking it, if you don't have the data, then it's very hard to address it and think about solutions, whether policy-driven, governmental, et cetera, if you don't have the data to do that. So human rights due diligence is trying to introduce the idea for companies that they need to more comprehensively consider their impacts. And they need to report back on these in a public way. And in this field, it might be looking at, well, how is a particular company, you know, how is it identifying that it either has a positive or negative impact on the rights of persons with disabilities? So it might be, for example, keeping account of people they're employing who have disabilities. It might also be looking at and considering ways that they're negatively impacting people, that they aren't employing people or they're not involving people in a more inclusive way. They're not marketing their products to people with rights of persons with disability. So it's a risk-based analysis, but it's a human rights risk-based analysis which looks at the activities of the company and its impact outward on individuals. So it's a really useful exercise to think about. And then the final stage of human rights due diligence is to look at, well, if there is a problem that we've caused or contributed to, then what's the remedy for that? How might we, we might come up with a plan to remediate or address that problem? And so it's that sort of circular effect, which is meant to be going ongoing. So you wouldn't do it in a one-off way. It might be an annual assessment. It might be, you know, two-year assessment. But it's a way of introducing to companies social considerations to identify and track in a manner that they have often only done in a more, to focus on financial impacts.
In terms of looking at those businesses that have worked to use the guiding principles in their corporate practices, have you seen a difference and particularly positive outcomes for businesses in terms of their impact on human rights?
Yeah, I mean, there are lots of positive examples and there's also many negative examples as well, because there's different ways of approaching these issues. And the UN Guiding Principles are guided, so they're soft law, they're not legally binding. And some companies have taken a more tick-the-box approach, where they appear to have sort of gone through the motions of reporting or doing due diligence, but not actually making any operational changes. But there are other ways where companies have sort of taken it to heart. So for example, if I look at a company, an example of a garment company, Cat Mandu, which is based in New Zealand, they were looking to figure out how they would apply this. And in order to improve their sort of labour rights within their supply chains, they decided they needed to sort of at least look at how to narrow that down a little bit, so they could enter into more substantive and longer-term arrangements with suppliers to ensure that the rates they were paying, the production timeframes they were on, meant that people all along the supply chain had better odds, basically, of having their rights at work respected. And so they were using the guidance of the guiding principles, taking in this place largely human rights around, labour rights around the workplace, to restructure and look at how their business model was impacting people. Because last-minute changes to orders or paying below rates, which people would ensure that they were not getting overtime rates, et cetera, had that flow-on effect in their supply chain. So you have seen some companies take these on board and think about how we need to do more risk assessments in the relation to the way we work. So they, they have been effective, but there's also limitations in, you can't force companies to use them. They're an expectation rather than a requirement.
Have any Australian companies explicitly adopted the United Nations guidelines? By Australian companies, I include Australian companies that have substantial international operations as well as domestic operations.
I would say, I don't have an exact figure, but I would say almost all of Australian multinational companies who have an international presence as well as in Australia, if you went to their website, you would see reference to the UN Guiding Principles. So all our big mining companies, you know, if you look at sort of David Jones to Country Road to Rio Tinto, all make reference to these on their websites. And now, as part of their sort of annual reports under the Modern Slavery Act, they're also referencing them as well. But companies as diverse as operating in the construction sector, to the garment sector, to mining, make reference to these guiding principles. How well they're implemented is distinct from whether they make reference to them.
You've just mentioned modern slavery. So just in the time we've got, can I ask you about modern slavery? Because it's related to the approach to business and its impact on human rights. And we've seen internationally that governments are prepared to hold businesses accountable if the businesses have in their supply chain instances of modern slavery. So modern slavery might involve what? Trafficking of people, slavery, forced labour. Is disability in the mix in terms of modern slavery?
So disability is in the mix in the context that persons with disability are highly vulnerable to aspects of modern slavery, including trafficking and abuse of workplace rights. But is there an explicit mention of them in the Modern Slavery Act? No, but the crimes that are set out in the Modern Slavery Act have, tend to fall on those who are most vulnerable, including persons with disability, often women in the workplace, migrant workers. So they're very much the impacted population.
And in summary, what does the Modern Slavery Act do and how does it regulate business activity?
So the Modern Slavery Act requires Australian businesses with a revenue of, annual revenue of over a hundred million dollars to annually report on the risks of modern slavery in their operations and supply chains. So they have to submit an annual report to a government registry, which is a public report. And in that, they basically set out, you know, what's our plan, what's our action plan in essence for dealing with modern slavery? And then they're also responding to, by noting the actions they've taken to address it. So there's criteria within the act which they report against. The criteria could be more specific, but it is there at a high level. And then there's an obligation on countries, on companies that fall within that revenue threshold to report.
Other than the reporting and the reviewing, is there any remedy for a victim of modern slavery in the Modern Slavery Act as it operates in Australia?
No, and there's some real limitations around the legislation. So one is the fact that there is no explicit requirement around remedy on that. There's also not an explicit requirement around human rights due diligence, even though that is mentioned as encouraged within the law, it's not required. And there's also no sanction for not complying. So there's no penalty if a company doesn't report other than ability for the government to report back on that in an annual report to Parliament.
Just for those following us, so the Modern Slavery Act that we're talking about is common legislation.
That's right.
There's also a proposed New South Wales Modern Slavery Act, but that hasn't got up and running in form at the moment.
No, that was adopted in 2018, but it is not yet implemented and it's still under negotiation, you might say, within the New South Wales Parliament.
Right. So the Commissioners may be interested to know, three of the service providers, registered service providers have modern slavery statements. And so it seems, Commissioners, that perhaps in future years, we can explore with the three larger service providers how modern slavery impacts on discharging their rights to people with disability. But I won't ask Professor Nolan about that today. But has the Modern Slavery Act made a difference? Can you see an impact on modern slavery in terms of business practices in Australia?
So we've only really seen one year of reporting so far, and it's too early to have a definitive conclusion around sort of its impact. What it's clear is that it's had a very strong impact in raising awareness and educating companies around human rights, specifically these human rights that fall within modern slavery. You know, five years ago, either large companies or smaller companies in Australia would never have heard of modern slavery. Now there's, you know, many of these companies are holding modern slavery trainings within their workplace. So modern slavery might include sort of the withholding of passports or identification documents. It's sort of this continuum. There's a bad workplace and then there's serious exploitation which falls within modern slavery. But there's a lot greater awareness and education around it. Some companies have made great strides in sort of addressing, looking at how they operate, particularly around their supply chain. Whether it has effectively filtered down to mitigate modern slavery at the bottom of supply chains where it is mostly found is a work in progress at the moment. And I would say that there's some changes that should be made in the law to ensure that happens. And also, it's a process that takes some time. So it hasn't happened in one year.
So when we're talking about supply chains, if it's, say, goods or products, we're saying, where does this product come from and what are the component parts working backwards to see what they are? So I think sometimes people say, if you have a mobile phone, the supply chain might take you back to where the lithium battery comes from. And that takes you into the Congo, for example. So is there slavery in that supply chain? Is that what we're looking at in modern slavery?
We are looking at that, but we're also looking at things closer to home. So it's also the provision of services. So if you look at cleaning services or security services, these are services provided to a company that are also part of their supply chain, but would be contained within Australia in relation to that. And so you are looking at, how are those workers recruited? How are they paid? And these are workers that may come to Australia or, you know, be in Australia, often on short-term visas. So you're looking at their treatment in the workplace as well. So it is goods, as you say, which may end in Australia or may end in a far-fung place overseas, that supply chain. But the supply chain is also local, particularly more so with the provision of services within Australia.
So one area the Royal Commission will look at is an area called disability, Australian Disability Enterprises, sometimes described as sheltered workshops. And these are segregated work settings for people with disability. And there's a range of arrangements around how those settings operate, but also the rates of pay. And we've heard already in the Royal Commission that the rates of pay can be surprisingly low and indeed below the minimum wage. Is a modern slavery lens something that can be used to understand disability rights and segregated workplace settings?
Yeah, so modern slavery is, as I said, it sort of is a term that you would look at on a continuum of exploitation. So wage underpayment by itself may not be modern slavery, but it would be a violation of workplace laws, potentially within Australia. But wage underpayment combined with a threat of coercion or a sort of a way of controlling workers, whether physically or psychologically, would then transform that abuse into modern slavery. So it's that sort of next stage of exploitation which often means that the worker doesn't have the ability to freely choose its workplace or leave his or her workplace. And it's that element of coercion or control combined with that other abuse which transforms something into modern slavery. And that may very well happen in those workplaces that you mentioned or in many other workplaces in Australia. So modern slavery is not something that just happens overseas. It very much happens within Australia.
And coming back to the framework of the Guiding Principles on Business and Human Rights, if those principles around identifying the risk of the business to human rights, not the risk of the recipient of services to human rights, if that due diligence model and reporting model is followed, are they mechanisms of detecting where modern slavery might occur?
Very much so. We've done well. So the Australian Modern Slavery Act, I think, is probably the first iteration of this type of reporting. And what we're seeing now in Europe is a push to sort of move to that second phase. So to have laws that require and mandate human rights due diligence. But what you're trying to do is involve companies in the process of detection and remediation. So most companies do not want to be doing the wrong thing. They want to know if they're doing the wrong thing. Of course, there's some companies who are deliberately, you know, causing harm or underpaying workers. But what you want to do is basically figure out a way to incentivize businesses to get involved and remediate this process. So human rights due diligence, if companies understand it and implement it properly, is a way of sort of identifying and preventing the harm from occurring in the first place. Because really what you want to focus on is prevention, not cure. And so if we can prevent the problem, which human rights due diligence is aimed to do, then we don't have to focus on remediation.
I'll just check if the Commissioners have got any questions.
Professor McKeown?
Yes, one question. Thank you, Chair. Professor Nolan, thank you for your evidence. You said that the United Nations, the Guiding Principles on Business and Human Rights, you said there's very little reference to disability and very little reference to the UN CRBD. In your view, why? Why is that the case?
Because I think there's a lack of focus on the rights of persons with disabilities globally. And that for many years, what the UN system has done as well is segregate it into one issue and silo it off and not recognize the intersectionality of the rights of persons with disabilities and that they cross over into the, you know, beyond the workplace, into community standards, gender, migrant workers, et cetera. And the UN has often taken quite a siloed approach to this. And that was still in evidence in 2011 when the Guiding Principles were focused on. And the fact that it hasn't been, you know, really the focus of a major push within companies, I think also led to that. I mean, I think you have seen sort of people that were involved in these original negotiations have since said there should have been a greater focus on migrant workers, rights of persons with disabilities, women, et cetera. But it did set this big picture. So I think that's a limitation, but I also think, as was mentioned, it's an opportunity to use those broader guidelines to then focus on a specific area and context.
Thank you, Professor.
Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Rupp?
Sorry, I can't quite hear.
I would like to extend Commissioner McKeown's question to one further. What could we practically do in the near future to make sure that the investigation of human rights for people with disabilities is a high priority for companies?
It's a great question. I think one thing is to increase awareness of the issues. And by doing that, I think there needs to be greater transparency. And so a lot of the time, people don't focus on a problem in part because they don't know there is a problem there unless you have an immediate connection to that problem. I think there's a lack of data around the impact of companies on people with disabilities. How many peoples are, you know, are working in companies within Australia? What type of jobs are they doing? Looking at their working conditions? So I think the first step is very much a sort of a data gathering, if you like, identifying what the problem is and then increasing awareness and education, the fact that there is a problem. And then look at how we involve both government and business and civil society in coming up with a solution around that. But part of it is, I think, a lack of, my thinking is that there's a lack of data and that we need to focus on gathering that information and that companies should be reporting on that. Like we see companies reporting on gender balance on boards.
Thank you.
I think you identified Rio Tinto as one of the companies that either was adhering or purporting to adhere to the guidelines. And your report also refers to Rio Tinto blowing up the forty-six thousand-year-old Gucon Gorge. What mechanism is there for companies that purport to comply with the guidelines which do not comply? What mechanisms are there for identifying those companies?
So I think what I said in my commentary, there is a big difference between companies that purport to adhere to the Guiding Principles and those that implement them. And Rio and the U K and Gorge example is an example of a massive gap where the company was purporting to implement the guidelines, but in fact did not follow through in terms of consultation with Indigenous communities. So did not adhere to them. Within the Guiding Principles, it's a soft law guidance, so there is no accountability for following them or not following them, other than really the court of public opinion. So in terms of Rio, we saw that played out with increased pressure from civil society and investors on the CEO and advisors, and you saw changes in management structure. But that was something where you sort of, they use the guidance, they use the Guiding Principles in many ways to say, you did not do this, but they looked at mechanisms outside. So a better, a better way would be is to draft, you know, a law or a policy that has accountability mechanisms within that. I think the Modern Slavery Act also falls short in relation to that. So when we're looking at something like human rights due diligence laws, which are starting to be drafted now in Europe, they're looking at whether you could include civil liability provisions in there. So if a company does not follow through, it would be possible to bring a lawsuit against the company. They also are considering whether companies could be fined, whether Board of Directors might be penalized, whether directors, if they report to do this and they do not do it, might be suspended or might be barred from being a director for a year. So there are lots of proposals that are actually being considered by the United Kingdom at the moment in relation to how to strengthen corporate adherence to their Modern Slavery Act, which both involves sanctions and incentives. And I think it's that mix of accountability when we're looking at if what we want companies to do is to report at a very first instance on how they are impacting persons with disabilities. There should be both penalties for not doing so, but incentives for being involved and doing that. Because I think companies respond very well to incentives in relation to that. But you need both the carrot and the stick in this approach. So I think the Guiding Principles and the Modern Slavery Act show us part of a way forward, but they don't show us the complete picture. And we're now ten years and, you know, three or four years after the Act, Modern Slavery Act, that we need to be on this focus of continuous improvement. And we shouldn't then just accept something that was adopted in 2011 as the standard. We need to now look at how we can do it better.
I think you answered my earlier question a little cautiously by saying that there are lots of companies that have referred to the guidelines in their, on their websites and so forth. Do we have any information on the proportion of companies that purport to adopt the guidelines that actually do implement the guidelines in Australia?
So in relation to those that do it well?
Yeah.
We don't have, no, we don't have exact figures. In fact, we're working on a report now to look at how companies are doing that in the context of the Modern Slavery Act. But, you know, there are examples. I mean, there's an interesting example of a small Australian company called Outland Denim, which operates out of Queensland, which I would say is sort of the epitome of how the UN Guiding Principles are operating in terms of both their operations and managing their supply chains, including, you know, sort of looking how largely their female workforce is looked after in their supply chain, providing childcare, employing people with disabilities, all of that. But they're more the rarity than the norm. But I think what you will see is that companies are adopting bits and pieces of it rather than often wholesale. But there are, I mean, in many ways, what the UN Guiding Principles has been is a massive education and awareness program that ten years ago, many companies did not think human rights were relevant to them at all. Now you would find that most companies, larger companies, I would say in Australia, understand the relevance of human rights and they're asking the question of how they do it, not why they should be doing it. And I think that's the point we need to get to with the, looking at the rights of persons with disabilities and their interaction with business as to how it should be done, not why. I think we've moved beyond that. It's how do we do it better?
Given the provenance of the guidelines through the Human Rights Council, where does the United States fit? It's not exactly a fan of the Human Rights Council.
So the United States also supported the UN Guiding Principles. I mean, the distinction here is that the Guiding Principles are soft law, so it's not a hard-law treaty, which often makes most countries then support them widely because they can't be held accountable for it. The current US administration is moving more ahead in this area. So they have drafted a national action plan on the implementation of business and human rights to give broader guidance to how American companies should behave with respect for what they refer to as civil rights. Australia has not done that, but the US is doing that. So, you know, administration by administration. So there's more progress now than there was three or four years ago. But with, like all international laws, the US tends to adopt a little bit of an exceptionalist view, but they have, they are actively looking at and considering how business interact with human rights. And there are a number of distinct mechanisms and laws in the US which you can advance these issues.
Thank you very much. I'll just inquire.
Chair, I have a client question relating to one of your questions. So Professor Nolan, you mentioned the carrot and stick metaphor. Do you have any specific suggestions for the Royal Commission as to how we can explore that further, given that we've started to hear a lot about some companies might be giving an incentive to employ people with disabilities, but that's not the norm? Do you have any specific suggestions or advice?
Yeah, so one example might be to think about, if there is, you know, if you were thinking about the employment of people with disabilities, about the employment of people with disabilities as a criteria for being involved in government procurement contracts, that you would have to show that that would be one of the criteria which your tender would be judged against. And the government would have, the federal government would have the ability to include that as a, as a criteria in tender. And so that would be one incentive to, to look at government procurement, which is by far the largest, you know, procurement budget within Australia. So build in those type of aspects, whether you're talking about a quota or whether you're just looking at it more holistically and generally looking at employment, that, that should be something that should be in consideration. So that would be very much an incentive that I think would work in the workplace.
Mr. Chair, if I...
Thank you.
Could ask another question too. Earlier, I asked you what could we do to encourage a greater priority of human rights within business? And you said, let's have some more data and awareness and things of that nature. Do you not think that it's possible that the reason that modern slavery has a much higher priority and focus within business now is because there was some legislation passed which focused people's attention on that and people with disability don't quite have the same legislative backup?
So I do think that there, that legislation is a real, is very important here. And I think what you need to see is, is a mix of measures. So what, what you, what you see in the, in the modern slavery field is that law, I mean, in many ways, government was led by business towards that, that they were showing that they wanted an even playing field, that some companies were reporting and some weren't. And I think the same analogy might, might apply here. So I think law is essential, but I also think that you have to think about, when you're thinking about implementation, law is not sort of the, the sole solution. If you're going to implement it, you have to think about how we change policies and bring business along in relation to that. But I, so I think that law is an essential part of the picture, but you also have to think about then an education or awareness or, you know, campaign around that to support the law, not just draft a law and leave it at that and expect that it will be complied with. I also think it's really important that if government is looking at this area, then they look at what resources they have to monitor such laws. So in relation to, say, the Modern Slavery Act, we've got a law that really has no resources within the federal government, or very limited resources within the federal government to then monitor compliance with that law. And the compliance is then largely left to civil society to then investigate whether companies are responding or not. So, you know, we don't do that with laws around taxation, but we're comfortable with human rights to leave it up to the market and civil society to monitor it. So if we're going to have laws that mandate greater respect for human rights and integrate it, then let's resource those laws so that there is the ability to ensure compliance with those laws.
Thank you. I shall assume that none of the parties given leave to appear have any questions that they wish to ask unless somebody leaps up. Since somebody is unlikely to leap up, thank you very much, Professor Ryan, coming to the Royal Commission. Professor Nolan, I'm sorry, coming, coming to the Royal Commission and giving evidence. We've covered a lot of ground in the last, in the last hour. Thank you for your evidence to the Royal Commission and the ideas that you have put forward, which provides some interesting food for thought. Thank you.
Thanks very much for the opportunity to speak with you.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mrs. Eastman, do we adjourn now?
We do. We're running a little behind time, so if we could...
I thought we were actually doing very well.
Really? So if we could adjourn for fifteen minutes?
Yes, all right. Well, it's, it's thirteen minutes to twelve, so perhaps if we adjourn to twelve noon.
The Royal Commission is adjourned. The Royal Commission is resumed.
Yes, Mrs. Eastman.
Commissioners, our next witness is Ms. Christina Ryan. I can now see her on the screen. Welcome, Ms. Ryan.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Ryan, for coming to the Royal Commission to give evidence. We appreciate your attendance. Just to explain where everybody is, we have three commissioners who are participating in this hearing. All of us are in the Sydney Hearing Room. Commissioner McEwan is with me on my right and Commissioner Ryan is on my left. Mrs. Eastman is in the same room and I'll now ask Mrs. Eastman to ask you some questions.
So, Ms. Ryan, you have provided the Royal Commission with an outline of your relevant work experience, your experience in human rights advocacy, and also your experience with the CRPD and also conventions touching on women's human rights. And we have asked you to, to talk to us today in the capacity of your role as the CEO of the Disability Leadership Institute. So can I start by asking you to tell the Royal Commissions about, the Commissioners, about the Disability Leadership Institute, what you do, how you do it, and why you established it? And then we're going to get straight into some Article twenty-nine and CRPD issues.
Certainly. Thank you, Mrs. Eastman. The Disability Leadership Institute is something I established five years ago, and I did that after spending twenty-five years working as a frontline advocate. I did a lot of work in community sector organisations, but throughout that entire period, I also did paid and voluntary work as a, a human rights advocate across both women and disability. I specifically started focusing on disability twenty-five years ago, and I have done a number of things in that time, including being on the NGO delegation for CEDOR, also the Australian Government delegation for CSW, the Commission on the Status of Women, both of those I did as part of Women with Disabilities Australia, with which I have done a lot of work. I had also moved across into frontline disability advocacy as an NDAP-funded organisation, National Disability Advocacy Programme, funded by the federal government to provide individual and systemic advocacy for disabled people in the ACT. It was during that time that I realised that the fundamental issue we're dealing with here is inequality, that the high levels of violence that were experienced by disabled people were because of the extreme marginalisation that we experienced. And I realised that what we needed was leadership. So I founded the Disability Leadership Institute in 2016, and we focus on leadership development. We have training programmes, coaching programmes, but we also have an intentional community of practice, much like organisations like Australian Engineers or Australian Women Lawyers. We have disability leaders who are able to come together and share their experiences through a, a community and thereby reduce their isolation, particularly for those working in mainstream organisations who are often the only person that they know of who is disabled in their workplace. So the Disability Leadership Institute provides membership spaces for people so that they can come together and, and talk and network, and then we also have our training and development programmes as well.
One of the issues we've heard in the work of the Royal Commission to date is the absence of people with disability in leadership roles, but also in decision-making positions. We've heard that in government and we've also heard that in the private sector and businesses. And you may have heard Professor Nolan's evidence just before you came on, talking about business and human rights and responsibilities of directors. So the topics we're going to talk to about today are not just limited to governments, but also touching upon how business responds to bringing disability leaders in. So, starting point is, we thought we would start with Article twenty-nine of the CRPD. So that article includes a range of rights, but it speaks to promoting actively an environment in which persons with disabilities can effectively and fully participate in the conduct of public affairs without discrimination and on an equal basis with others, and encourage their participation in public affairs, including participation in non-governmental organisations and associations concerned with the public and political life of the country, and in activities and administration of political parties. Also, the forming and joining organisations of persons with disabilities to represent persons with disabilities at international, national, regional and local levels. So that's one part of Article twenty-nine. And we heard from some of the advocates yesterday in terms of both their work at an international level engaging with the UN and their local level. But our focus is going to be on disability leadership in this participation in public and political life. So what needs to happen in Australia to make Article twenty-nine a reality for disability leaders?
Quite a bit. There's been very little attention to this. And in fact, when I was establishing the Disability Leadership Institute in the first half of 2016, I sat down and chatted with a number of trusted colleagues in the disability community who I'd got to know over many years or decades. And one of the things we identified was that there had been maybe six, we think, leadership development programmes for disabled people during the previous twenty years. And most of those were pilot projects or one-off projects that were also geographically based, so they were in a specific state or a specific city. And that was it. And, you know, if we, if we really dug deep and did a bit of research, we might find another two or three programmes, but it was a very low number over twenty years. And I think that gives a really strong indication of the lack of attention this area has been given. It also gives a really strong indication of the level of priority that governments and private organisations give to disability leadership. And that really spoke to me about the need to not only have leadership development, but to also have an ongoing presence of leadership development, so that somebody one day, as somebody did with me yesterday, they stick their hand up and think, oh, now's the time that I want to start investigating this. It's the right time for them so they can start investigating what's the best process for them, what sort of training and development might be useful for them, rather than having to wait for some other pilot project to spring up in some odd location in six months or six years' time. So there hasn't been a lot of work done in this area at all. And in fact, I'd like us to broaden the focus out here and talk about Article three in this context, right at the beginning of the convention, one of the principles articles, which talks about equality and the right to equality of disabled people. And I think fundamentally what we're examining here is one of the outcomes of that inequality. Disabled people have simply not been considered as leaders. We seem to have been left by the wayside when it comes to being considered as people who are able to do leadership. And when I've spoken to organisations, both government and private organisations, it had never occurred to them that they should be running disability leadership development in any way. There was nothing happening in Australia when I first established the institute. So it's, it's been a long road and very little work has been done. What we're seeing is the consequence of that. We're seeing a lack of visibility, and I don't mean visible disabilities, the vast majority of disabled people, you can't tell by looking. What I mean is that there are very few openly disabled people in positions of leadership, decision-making, positions of authority. It, it's actually quite an interesting thing. One of the things that I discovered during my Westpac fellowship back in 2017, I did a Westpac Social Change Fellowship, was that there, there were no actual disability leadership programmes, but there was also no recognition that disabled people should be targeted or provided with development opportunities. There's now one in-house programme that's running, and in fact, I'm actually delivering that. It's one of the large corporate organisations. Good on them, they're one of the only ones that seems to have picked anything up. Most organisations have not actually considered that their disabled staff might be targeted for fast-track or senior opportunities. And if we look at not just my Westpac fellowship, but report, but reports like the Doing It Differently report, which was undertaken by the University of Canberra Institute of Governance and Policy Analysis back in 2016 as well, they show us that, that there's just no consideration that leadership development is a thing for disabled people. And so we're not seeing people in the media, being the journalists fronting the media, although that is changing now. We're not seeing people as the experts turning up, talking about particular issues. We're not seeing disabled people running organisations, including organisations that have a disability focus. We're not seeing disabled people in the rooms of power, the leadership and decision-making rooms. There are over nine hundred parliamentarians in Australia, state and federal parliamentarians. We have four openly identified disabled people in the parliaments of Australia, four. That number's been static for some years, the personnel have changed slightly. So this is what we're seeing as a result of a lack of disability leadership focus, a lack of development opportunity.
Can I jump, jump in there?
Yes.
Is, why is leadership important to ways of bringing human rights into the Australian systems and practices? What, what is it important about having a leader to connect to rights implementation or rights compliance? What's that connection?
It, it's, it's quite interesting, and I think we need to move away from being one leader. It's really, it's, it's a bit classic to think we can just have one disabled person in the room and then our problems are solved, although that one person will make a difference. We know that. One of the things with, the, the difference that happens when disabled people in the room is that we don't get forgotten. It's as simple as that. Like any minority group, our presence in the room makes it possible for us to be a factor in the decisions, in the discussions, and therefore in the outcomes of those conversations, the decisions made. I want to reference the pandemic plan that was developed by the Australian Government last February, March. And this commission, in fact, did a very good analysis of the absence of disability in that particular plan and the ramifications for it. That's what we see when disabled people are not in the room. We get forgotten about. And all of the disability leaders that I know have examples where being in the room has made a difference. My work at the United Nations, for example, I am visibly disabled, I come with a wheelchair. The year that I was inside the negotiating rooms at CSW, there was a large amount of language about minority groups, about intersectionality, multiple disadvantage, and specifically disability that ended up being...
Just jumping in there, CSW is the Commission on the Status of Women.
Commission on the Status of Women, that's right. Sorry for the blokes, yep. And one of the things that happened was we ended up with a lot of language there, and it was very interesting being in that room. There were no other evidently disabled people on any of the official delegations at CSW that year. I was, it felt incredibly alone to be there. That said, many of the other delegations actually come up to reference what this language is about. Can we look at it this way? How do we talk about it? And that language that ended up in those particular outcomes is still referenced today in CSW outcomes. It has remained. So it has changed the ground. The other thing that then happened was that other forums within the United Nations started realising that their interactions needed to include disabled women on this particular example, but disabled people. And so not everything that happens, happens in a disability-specific space. It also happens in mainstream spaces. So whether that's boardrooms, whether that's management teams, whether that's government, whether it's the cabinet, whatever room it is, the presence of disabled people in that room, openly identified disabled people, will change the way the conversation turns. It will remind the other people in the room that, oh, we have to think about the disabled folk. But it also provides critically diversity. And what we actually know, and there's plenty of research about this in other areas, is that diverse groups of people make very different decisions. Their decisions are richer, deeper, they often solve problems a lot faster, there's a lot of research saying, not... not just disabled people, but diverse teams actually solve problems up to twice as fast as non-diverse teams. So having a presence of disabled people in the room will change what's happening. To shift the power dynamic and have those people as people engaged in the decision-making process actually means that decisions are starting to look different. We're remembering that minorities exist. We're remembering that some of those minority folk are disabled people. We're remembering the intersectional disabled folk, so our indigenous folk, our people from culturally diverse backgrounds, our people from the LGBTQ space. The disability community is incredibly diverse. By having the presence of those people in those spaces, we will be shifting the conversation. That's the importance of having people in the room. It takes us right back to the work in the eighties that was being done around getting women into boardrooms, where a lot of major companies, and we're talking Fortune five hundred companies, followed some time later by ASX companies, that having women in boardrooms meant they could actually speak more robustly to their target market. If you've got a bunch of old white guys trying to talk to some women about things, it's it's a problem. We've got the same problem with the lack of disabled people in the room. We've got people who don't really understand disability trying to talk to us. And of course, we end up with things happening like the lack of pandemic response, the de-prioritising of vaccination. We end up with things happening like the NDIS Independent Assessments proposal, which we we, you know, the minute disabled people saw it, we all just went, well, this isn't going to work. It's just got to stop. That's the problem with not having disabled people in the decision-making spaces where they need to be.
Can I jump in there? If we just take the example of trying to increase the presence of women on boards, and there's been a range of initiatives about that. There's even now databases that people can sign up, women can sign up to, to say, I'd like to be considered for a public sector board or private sector board. So there's something called BoardLinks. To what extent has the work done on encouraging, supporting and promoting women to go on boards included women with disability?
Oh, well, it hasn't. It 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 doesn't. We get forgotten in these things. And I think this is a really terrific example of what sort of problems arise when we forget about disability. And here we're talking about Article thirty one, which is the one about data collection. The interesting thing about BoardLinks is that women who sign up for BoardLinks, which is run by the Commonwealth Office for Women, are able to indicate whether they're indigenous, because we do want an increase of indigenous women on our government boards and committees. It's also possible to indicate that you come from a culturally diverse background, because we want to see an increase of culturally diverse women in these spaces. And when I say women, I mean women and female identifying and non-binary folk. And yet there is no box to tick when we sign up for BoardLinks that says I identify as a disabled woman. And so, for example, quite recently, the NDIS minister has been going through the process of identifying four new board members for the NDIA, a disability-specific board. She has had no capacity to use the BoardLinks database to assist her to find disabled people for those positions. And yet, there is a database full of highly qualified, board-capable women.
It could include, but it could include women who have disability but haven't identified in that way.
Absolutely.
Point is, when you're talking about particular work or particular boards like the NDIA that may have a very direct impact on women with disability, that ability to cut across both gender and disability is important. Is that the
It's crucially important and that and that database, and I I know there are many disabled women on the BoardLinks database. I know, I know many of them. Except there is no way for the appointment process to identify who they are. So data collection, data disaggregation is not happening. There's a lot of things around data that aren't helping us here. The the thing that's really getting in the way there is we don't know where disabled people are. We don't know what their career paths are looking like. We don't understand what outcomes are happening. I'd like here to mention the Victorian Government because they're the only Australian government who's doing any real work around disability leadership and improving the numbers of disabled people being appointed to boards and committees, but also to senior positions within the Victorian Public Service. But even the Victorian Government is not collecting the data that it needs to better understand how many disabled people are actually applying for these positions, how many people are being appointed, what the barriers therefore might be that they could be addressing.
So when when, sorry, going to jump in, when you're talking about Victoria, you're talking about the Victorian disability strategic plan?
No, I'm not talking about the Victorian Strategic Plan, or specif- not specifically. Over the last five years, the Victorian Government has run a number of projects, and they have been both before and after the current plan came into effect, with a view to improving the development, the leadership development of disabled people. But also subsequently, they ran a lengthy project which has now come to an end around improving the numbers of disabled people on the government boards and committees, recognising that it needed to improve. And I'll recognise there the sterling work that the Victorian Government has done around gender, where they achieved gender parity particularly in their legal circles. So appointing judges, magistrates, those sorts of people, and people to in-house, so commissioners like Human Rights Commissioners, Equal Opportunity Commissioners. They now have gender parity in Victoria over about a five-year period. So they consciously made a decision to do something about it. Well, they also consciously made a decision to do something about appointing disabled people, but they still aren't collecting the level of data that they require that would make it easier for them to appoint people and to understand the barriers. So even the the government, the one government in the country that's doing something really outstanding by at least recognising the lack of disability leadership, still has a long way to go around its data collection processes.
So it might be said, there are some examples, aren't there, of scholarships to promote, for example, women to have the experience on working in both public sector and private sector boards. I think Victoria allocated something in the order of seven hundred thousand dollars to increase women's leadership and participation in decision-making through increased board representation. And that included scholarships for women with disability. And has the Australian Institute of Company Directors also had a programme at different times to encourage women with disability through a scholarship programme? So there've been some initiatives?
There have been some initiatives. Most of these have happened have happened in the last five to eight years. It's fantastic to see them. They're they're few and far between. They're very hard to get. That's okay. We're seeing a shift. I would like to see the Institute of Company Directors collect the data on who is disabled. They have the same problem as the BoardLinks database. We do not know how many members of the Institute of Company Directors identify as disabled people. And yet they collect data on indigenous directors, culturally diverse directors, women. And so we know that they're able to collect data on the the diversity status of of their members, but they are not collecting that data about who is openly identifying as disabled. What this actually means is we then don't know who are the ASX directors, who are disabled people. We know it's a very low number, but we don't know specifically who's there. It's it's really giving us a problem in making sure that we can not only use those people as visible examples, role models, but it also means we're not in a position to then appoint them into other spaces. It also means we can't use them as mentors, as guides. And it also means we don't gain an understanding of the barriers that are being faced. We know that a lot of these appointments are made through networks, excuse me, but we aren't understanding what the barriers to those networks are, other than what, for example, Disability Leadership Institute, DLI, members talk about barriers, for example, being unable to access training and development opportunities in the mainstream because they're not accessible for one reason or another, or because people are made to feel unwelcome. Or people turn up at networking events, for example, which is a really important leadership domain. And those networking events, you know, people just don't want to know the disabled people in the room, so they tend to ignore us or sideline us. Unless we've got a lot of chutzpah and shove ourselves into people's faces. So there's an incredible amount of kind of lack of understanding, which is an oxymoron. There's a lack of understanding about about exactly where disabled people are, the barriers that we're facing. What we do know is that it's incredibly hard to break into those mainstream spaces because there's no work being done to actually shift them, to change them, to make them more adaptable, more suitable for the way disabled people operate.
So can I ask you, surely there is a role for directors and for leaders without disability to have a better understanding and to be more proactive? It can't just be a burden imposed on the person with disability to have to say, yes, I wish to be a leader and and make space. We have to address the other side of it. So how do we do that? And what do you see in terms of creating that awareness among leaders, boards, CEOs, to open up for people with disability?
It's I think there's there's a number of things that that came through from my Westpac Fellowship report. One of them is that the classic thing of nobody's ever thought of it. So it's it's about thinking about it for a start, about recognising it. And an organisation which is global called the Valuable Five Hundred, who don't do leadership development and training, they're mainly awareness raising, which is great. We need that work being done. And they do a lot of work with the World Economic Forum. They have undertaken a survey of major companies globally, and I understand that over ninety percent of organisations are saying that disability diversity is important. Less than four percent are actually doing anything. And and this is backed up by what I found in my Westpac Fellowship report, which was done at a similar time to this research, where a lot of organisations are saying it's really important. You know, disability is really important. We need this to be happening. We want more disability diversity. But they're not actually doing anything. They're just expecting it to show up. They're just
What's the barrier, what's the barrier then? What is the barrier?
The 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 barriers are numerous in this way. One of them is a willingness. Organisations are not really identifying that they don't have any disabled people. They they kind of know, but they don't think they should do anything about it. Something else that that we identified very early in the piece at the Disability Leadership Institute is that most of the other leadership development programmes that have referenced disabled people, apart from the fact that they're run by non-disabled people, are actually put on at entry level. So there is an assumption that disabled people are not already leadership folk. And as as, you know, evidence of that one, I'm just going to refer to your witness list for yesterday, which was a big, long list of people who are highly qualified disabled people, just about all of them, all of whom would be capable of sitting on boards, of acting as managers, as executive leadership teams. You've got a couple of commissioners here at the at the Royal Commission who are very much in that space, capable of doing those sorts of things. And yet, there's no training and development pitched at that level until we came along. Now, I'm sure there'll be others that come along eventually, but at the moment, we're it. The assumption that disabled people are all not in these places because we're not ready, which is of course what they said about women back in the eighties. So we know that there's, a lot of it's coming down to prejudice. I'm going to name prejudice. I refuse to use polite words in that space. Mainly because prejudice is such a revolting thing. So we're not resourcing leadership development. We're not making an assumption that leaders also happen at all levels. And we aren't maintaining a consistent presence of leadership. So even when organisations do something about it, they might do one small thing, hopefully for no cost at all. Or if they put some money into it or some resources into it, they'll put a bit of money at the end of the financial year. They'll chuck it at that. And, you know, this is not what we've seen in other diversity areas. In other diversity areas where change has really happened, we've seen consistent longitudinal attention being paid to the area. We've seen specialist leadership development for that particular cohort of folk. We've seen fast-track programmes inside organisations, both government and non-government. We've seen CEOs and managed executive teams particularly taking charge of the importance of this particular programme or diversity stream. And I recall my Westpac Fellowship year was the year that Westpac also hit fifty percent of women in its executive and leadership. And it made a big issue of it. It was it was very excited by it. It had worked hard at this. It had made a concerted effort over it. It had put serious resources into it, and it arrived at fifty percent of its board and its leadership.
Does that mean that one of the action items or levers for change is to be very clear about having quotas or targets and building in an intention that can be enforceable in terms of changing those numbers?
I I think it's, I think so. I mean, I don't care what you call them. You know, I've I've spent most of my life working in human rights, and you can call them quotas or targets, you can call them intentions. Whatever political language works for whoever's making decisions at the time, whether they're in government or in the private sector. But we've actually got, for example, an NDIA with no disabled people on its board or in its executive leadership team. The NDIA is now getting up for being a decade old. That's actually a longer lifespan than the global average for CEO tenure, which is five to eight years. So why have we yet to have a disabled CEO? DSS, the Department of Social Services, no disabled people at SES level, and they're the ones making policy decisions on behalf of the federal government around disability. This is
I just ask you on that, we're going to hear shortly from some representatives of the Australian Government. And one area I want to ask about is about the focal point, which is a particular mechanism in the CRPD to have in one place how government deals with complying and or implementing the CRPD rights across all areas of government. Are you aware of the numbers of people with disability who are actively working as part of the Australian Government's focal point?
I'm not aware of that one specifically. I do know a few other things. One of them is that there's about five openly disabled people at SES level, so that would be decision-makers and people who are briefing ministers.
That's the highest SES of the three SES levels, is that right?
No, we're talking about the whole of the SES. It's like quite a large number of people, five, five in the Australian Public Service. You know, it's, the absence is quite profound. The last National Disability Strategy, which has now expired and is being renewed or is being redeveloped, did not mention leadership once. And yet economic engagement, economic development was a particular chapter in that particular strategy. So they were able to talk about economic engagement for disabled people, which the NDIS is also very fond of doing. But there is no attention being paid to leadership development as part of that economic development. So it doesn't look like the situation's changing anytime soon. I've already mentioned that, you know, we only have the the four openly disabled parliamentarians. Most disability service providers, you know, this is all disability specific. Most disability service providers have few or no disabled people on their boards. These are people getting multi-million dollar industries servicing disabled people, and yet they have no one in the boardroom or the decision-making management teams who are disabled. It's it's just incredible. We actually don't know, as I've said, how many openly disabled people are on ASX boards because it's not being collected. We don't know how many openly disabled people are in our major companies. We know about women, we know about indigenous people. We do not know about disabled people in these spaces. Anecdotally, through the DLI and through our sort of back-room dealings, we have some understanding of individual people here and there. None of them are at executive leadership level, and we are unaware of people on any of the boards of those organisations.
What about if government sort of says What about if government sort of says, well, look, we don't have anyone in these leadership roles, but we do have a lot of consultation and we set up forums and we have advisory bodies, the Royal Commission has heard, for example, an advisory group to the Department of Health during the immediate response to the Covid pandemic. So we see across government forms of consultation, advisory boards and the like. How does that fit in with meeting, in your view, those Article twenty-nine obligations and addressing the right to be heard? Is that good enough?
Well, advisory bodies, independent assessments happened with advisory bodies in place. The deprioritising of vaccination happened with advisory bodies in place. No, they don't work. And in fact, research that we have undertaken, we're not a research organisation, so it's highly unusual for us to be able to do this. But we did three years ago undertake research as part of a particular consulting job that we were doing for a particular agency. And we did a global scan and the person who did the global scan for the D L I is someone whose Churchill Fellowship was based on disability leadership, back when I was doing my Westpac Fellowship on disability leadership. And what we identified was that advisory groups don't work. It's as simple as that. If we want to understand disability, if we want to have that presence in the room, if we want to understand what the impact, the views, the understanding of disabled people is, then we actually need people in the room on an ongoing basis. And the reason advisory groups don't work is because you need to have a very proactive channel between the decision-making body, which is your board or your executive leadership team, across to the advisory group. The first thing that happens under pressure or when it's politically inconvenient is that that connector breaks or it isn't referred to. Or people take the advice and then decide something that's more politically expedient for them at the time. So it's a very different power dynamic. Advisory groups don't have power. All they can do is advise. And so we see poor, not poor advice, we can see really good advice being given, but it is readily discarded. The organisations, and this is why we undertook the global scan, the organisations that succeed not just in developing in-house inclusive culture and not just in developing a leadership pathway, career pathways internally for disabled people so that they do end up at the top, but also the ones where disabled people have a much better customer experience, for want of a better word, are the ones that have a presence of disability in the room from the board down. And they literally build it into their culture. And it's not about this constant focus on disability. It is simply having disability as part of the everyday conversation from people who know.
Are there models, yeah, are there models that from an Australian perspective or for the Royal Commissioners to look to that might assist the Royal Commissioners in seeing if somebody has done it well or perhaps I might describe it as promising practice? Is there any models that we could look to?
Promising, I'm not sure I can even dredge up a promising for you, Ms Eastman. It's quite disappointing. All of the examples that we found as part of that global scan were international examples. And I think that says a lot perhaps about how the Australian Government and civil society are implementing the C R P D or not, how they are addressing Article Three inequality, how they are really putting attention into that. Because this work is simply not being done. There is no work that I am aware of where that is being addressed in a robust way for more than a pilot programme. And so, you know, even our disability services, the people who are supposedly wanting to understand what the customer experience of disability is, including the N D I A, do not have that presence and do not have mechanisms in place to make it happen. They seem to be working on an organic sort of let's hope and pray kind of option, which, as we know, which is why the C R P D exists in the first place, we won't get outcomes by hoping and praying. We actually need implementation of instruments. And so that means governments must commit resources. Private sector must understand that its development programmes, its leadership work needs to incorporate disability as a specialist focus. And we also need to understand that data tracking, so we know where people are, what their leadership pathway experiences are like. We need graduate programmes, for example, to have a good twenty-five percent of their intake needs to be disabled people to meet population parity. We need organisations to think about what their board looks like. And in fact, the international benchmarks which hang off the C R P D, they're not mentioned in it specifically. But the understanding of organisations that focus on disability is that fifty-plus percent of their decision-makers will be disabled people. This is what happens in that global scan when we look at the organisations doing it well. If you want to have a disability as your business, including people like D S S making briefs for the government, then you need to have that fifty-plus percent figure present in the room of decision-makers. Half the people. Now, we're well short of that for the N D I S board. We haven't got any at the moment. It also means we need to think about twenty percent, which is about the Australian level of population parity, being what's present in the room for non-disability-specific organisations. So the big corporates, the A S X companies, non-disability-relevant boards and committees of government across the public sectors. We actually need to be looking at these numbers and we need to be committing to them across all levels of government, but also in the private sector. Otherwise, we're not going to see this change according to the evidence that we have from the international community.
So I think in a few weeks' time, you've got to participate in our employment hearing and we'll talk about specific employment indicators just before I lose my voice. I don't need to ask you about that today, but I might ask the Commissioners if they have any questions.
Very sensible. Yes, Commissioner McEwan.
Thank you, Chair. Ms Ryan, thank you for your evidence. One question. We've heard a lot in this Royal Commission about the historical and ongoing exclusion and segregation of disabled people in many areas of life. Do you think that is a contributing factor to the lack of disabled leaders? And if so, how? And how can we address that?
I think it's quite critical. In fact, there's almost this cultural norm or cultural assumption that disabled people are inherently incapable of leadership. And I think that's, you know, that's the prejudice I've been referring to, Commissioner McEwan. It's quite profound. And we get examples coming to us at the Disability Leadership Institute all the time. Many are from people who are not openly identified because of the risk it would be to their career to openly identify. So people know that, and particularly the higher you get in an organisation, the more senior you are, the more risk it poses to the individual to openly disclose their disability. So people approach me and my team through private messaging or, you know, emails if they, once they understand that we are discreet with this information. I'll also mention we have a way of checking with our members when they first sign up, whether they're prepared to be openly identified as a member of the D L I or not. And we do that for the same reason. Because people have been sidelined, people have been ridiculed, people have been talked about, even in front of them, in a way that is demeaning, derogatory, which presupposes that they have no capacity to be in the place that they are in. We have people who have talked about being appointed to boards as a token disabled person and I use the word token very advisedly there. So we've got a disabled person on our board, but they are never provided with the information they need to be able to participate in the board equally. They're never given the papers in time in a format that works for them so that they can prepare for the meeting. There might not be interpreters in the meeting, so they can't participate. They are literally there as a token presence. It's something that we also see in the Doing It Differently report, which I cited, which examined the Australian Public Service. And at the time that that report was being done, I spoke to five public services as my Westpac Fellowship, but I also talked to probably, it was somewhere about forty different Australian large corporates. And the story was the same right across the board. The bullying levels were incredibly high, at least twice as high as for non-disabled people. But subsequent conversations I've had with other public sector organisations where their in-house surveys that are done anonymously have identified three or four times the bullying levels. But what people have also said is things like, they're told to their face. We've given you a job. What more do you want? They're never sent for professional development. That's not for you. You're here just to do this. You won't be going any further. You are literally given a job and that's it. So there's no understanding or expectation, no social kind of recognition that a disabled person arriving at an organisation might one day end up being the CEO, might one day end up being the departmental secretary. And I, apart from finding this appallingly offensive, you know, the people that we have as part of our leadership development programmes at the D L I and as part of our coaching programmes, there are many, many people as part of that alumnus who will one day be running government departments, who should be sitting on A S X boards, who are incredibly talented, incisive, strategic people, except that the people around them don't think they are up for it. I've had people saying, you know, in political forums, our political parties, our mainstream political parties are appalling at this. People are actively discouraged from running for pre-selection. Or when they're in the room, people start those whispering campaigns. You know, and I've had stories of people saying, I came across a cluster of people or saying, oh, he's not up for it really though, is it? He won't be able to hack the pace. So the active discouragement, the active supposition, and it all goes back to the same reasoning of out of sight, out of mind. It's confronting. It's embarrassing. People don't want to think that somebody who is potentially needing some workplace adjustment or who operates differently is actually going to be as good or better at their job than they are. They find that really confronting.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
I don't have any questions, Mr Chair. I thank Ms Ryan for her evidence. It's very clear and given us plenty to think about, but you're ahead of this than I am, so I don't have questions for you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Ms Ryan, I'll just inquire whether any of the council have any questions for you. I suspect if we follow the usual practice, there will not be. That is correct. So thank you very much, Ms Ryan, for giving your evidence so clearly and persuasively. We're very grateful to you for coming to the Royal Commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner, Ms Ryan will be participating in public hearing nineteen. So some of the topics that we've covered today, we'll probably expand on in the context of employment in a couple of weeks' time. Thank you, Ms Ryan.
Thank you.
We now adjourn for one hour.
Can I just tender some material first, which I forgot to do the last time we adjourned? So you have Professor Nolan's CV and you also have the report which we touched on called At The Crossroads, Ten Years Of Implementing The U N Guiding Principles On Business And Human Rights In Australia, 2021. So could both those documents be received and marked respectively eighteen point eighteen and eighteen point nineteen?
Yes, that can be done, thank you.
And if we could then adjourn, I think we were hoping to resume at one fifty, if that's convenient to the commission.
We'll resume at one fifty.
The Royal Commission is adjourned. The Royal Commission is resumed.
Yes, Ms Eastman.
Thank you, Commissioners. We have a panel now of three representatives of the Australian Government. Just before we turn to them. Commissioners, as you are aware, the Australian Government provided a background paper to the Royal Commission in June last year. And the background paper was said to be the Commonwealth's or the Australian Government's approach to the interpreting of the C R P D and various matters touching on the Australian Government's compliance with the C R P D. The background paper is on the Royal Commission's website. And in the course of preparing for this hearing, we wrote to the Australian Government with some questions arising from the background paper. Our letter dated the twenty-sixth of October, sorry, September. Anyway, our letter sought some clarification of matters in the background paper and the Commonwealth responded on the first of November this year. So the purpose of this panel is to ask the Commonwealth representatives some questions about the background paper and the response from the first of November and touch on the issues that I outlined in the opening. I want to stress to those following the proceeding that the Royal Commission is not stepping into the shoes of the C R P D committee and taking an approach of one by one of the rights, working through the extent to which the Commonwealth complies with those rights. Our focus for this session is to understand the approach the Commonwealth Government or Australian Government, and I use those expressions interchangeably, takes. So.
Can I just, before you start, thank Ms Robertson, Mr Walter and Mr Mansfield for coming to the Royal Commission to give evidence and for the material that has been provided on behalf of the Australian Government. Just to explain where everybody is, you probably know, but the three Commissioners sitting on this hearing are all in the Sydney Hearing Room. Commissioner McEwan is with me on my right. Commissioner Ryan is on my left. Ms Eastman, who will be asking you some questions, is also in the Sydney Hearing Room. I'll now ask Ms Eastman to put some questions to.
So Commissioners, the three members of the panel were identified by the solicitors acting for the Australian Government. Now, other than their names and titles, we haven't been provided with a copy of any of the panelists' CVs and we know little about them. So I'm going to have to ask some questions to understand who our witnesses are. So, Ms Robertson, can I start with you first?
Yeah, I think there's an implicit question there, Ms Robertson.
Yes, you certainly can. So we know that you are the First Assistant Secretary of the Attorney General's Department in the area of Integrity and International Group, International Division. That's your official title, is that right?
That's correct.
What does that mean?
That means I am responsible for the Office of International Law, which provides international law advice across the whole of government and the Attorney General and Cabinet. And also is responsible for the coordination and submission of Commonwealth responses to the individual complaint mechanisms under the C R P D. And I'm also responsible for another group, which is the International Crime and Cooperation Group, which is not necessarily relevant to this discussion.
What are your particular responsibilities with respect to the C R P D?
General international law advice as matters may arise, that where government agencies ask for advice. We also provide advice from time to time to the Human Rights Unit, of which Mr Walter is the head. So for example, in relation to our appearances before treaty bodies, we may review legal advice there on our positions. So the focus is more on the legal advice and less on implementation. And as I said, we also are in charge of the government responses to the complaint mechanisms under the five human rights treaties, including C R P D.
So am I right in understanding that your particular expertise is not focused solely on the C R P D? But how the CRPD fits into the general international human rights obligations of Australia? So that picks up the other treaties, is that right?
I think it's, I think that's fair. I think it's fair to say I don't deal with it every day. We deal with such a breadth of international law issues. But um I deal with it from time to time and I'm in charge of, uh, I guess, providing uh the second counselling on legal advice that occurs when it comes up.
All right. Um, I can see at the other end of the table, Mr Walter. You are the First Assistant Secretary, Attorney General's Department, Integrity and International Group, International Division. Is that your title? That seems to be the same as Ms Robertson's title.
Uh, no, that's, that's, that's not correct. I'm the First Assistant Secretary of the Integrity and Security Division uh in Integrity and International Group.
What, and so what are your responsibilities and how do they differ from Ms Robertson?
Uh, so my division has a very broad range of responsibilities um across a range of policy areas, and I won't list them all because that would take some time. Uh, however, most relevantly, um, my division is responsible for domestic human rights policy, particularly in respect of uh discrimination laws. Uh, we have in the Division of Human Rights Branch, which includes a particular unit, the Human Rights Unit, uh, which um is responsible for developing, implementing and advising on domestic human rights policy. Um, and uh also a range of other matters to do with human rights.
Are, are we right in understanding that you led the Australian delegation to the CRPD Committee's review of Australia's second and third periodic reports in September twenty nineteen?
That's correct.
Uh, Mr Mansfield, we understand uh you are the Acting Sec Deputy Secretary Disability and Carers in the Department of Social Services. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And what are your responsibilities?
So the, the stream, the disability and carers stream is responsible for uh policies and programmes, a range of policies and programmes related to uh people with disability and carers, including the National Disability Insurance Scheme from a policy perspective. Um, most relevantly to this particular hearing, um uh, there's a branch within uh the stream that's responsible for the National Disability Strategy in terms of its uh implementation, as well as the development of the next disability strategy. And there's also a branch, uh advocacy and inclusion branch, um that provides uh support for uh advocacy services uh and other inclusion measures, but also is the focal point for engaging with Mr Walter's uh group with respect to um uh the convention uh matters and reporting processes associated with the convention.
Well, um, thank you all for your time and participation in the hearing today. Can I ask each of you, do you have a copy of the background paper dated the sixteenth of June twenty twenty?
Yes, yes.
Uh, can you tell me whether uh any one of the three of you are the author or authors of that paper?
Uh, Ms Eastman, um, the paper uh was um coordinated, if you like, and some of it drafted under uh my Office of International Law. Um, where um we had uh the major role there in terms of um treaty interpretation aspects. But there was also input um from others, including um uh Mr Walter's team and um DFS as well.
So do I take it that none of you are the authors of the background paper?
There is no one author to the background paper, that is true, although um both Mr Walter and myself um cleared the relevant parts of the paper for which we are responsible.
Sorry, just to, my apologies, Ms Eastman, just to clarify, I didn't actually clear the, this paper. Um, uh, but um I had somebody else in, uh, my division did.
When you talk about clear the paper, um, for both of you, what, do you mean that um that there was someone who might not have been the sole author, but there was a person or persons who authorised that paper to be provided to the Royal Commission on behalf of the Australian Government?
The, the usual process uh that we follow is for um, you know, action officers or legal officers to prepare uh papers, they then go through a process of clearance. Uh, and uh ultimately, uh, the responsibility for relevant content rests on the senior officer who uh cleared that content.
Mr Mansfield, did your department have any role in the preparation of this paper?
To my knowledge, no, Ms Eastman, I don't believe so. Not this paper, but certainly the responses to questions. Uh, but we, we did have input to that process.
I'll come, I'll come to that one in a moment, uh, but just sticking with the background paper from June last year. Have you all read the paper?
Yes.
Do you all agree with its contents as being accurate and correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And, and does the paper represent the views of the Australian Government at the present time?
Yes, that's correct.
Can I turn to the second paper, which I hope you have? And that is the response to the Royal Commission's questions provided on the first of November this year. Can you have a copy of that paper?
Yes, yes.
Now, I'll ask you, same as I did before, are, are any of you the authors of that paper?
I'm not the author of the paper. However, there are areas within the Department of Social Services that contributed to uh the paper. And uh I uh au- authorised um certain content within the, the paper to be provided to the coordinating area.
Uh, Mr Walter, Ms Robertson, what was your involvement, if any, with the, this paper, the response paper?
Uh, perhaps if I go first, um, uh, my, uh, so the Human Rights Unit, I mentioned earlier, coordinated the input from various departments to particularly the later uh questions in the paper. Um, and I cleared uh the content of the paper to the extent that it related to the responsibilities of my division.
And Ms Robertson?
Uh, Ms Eastman, I cleared um predominantly topic one of this paper, um with the exception of um question six, which um largely touches on um the Disability Discrimination Act um for which the Human Rights Unit is responsible.
All right, thank you. And uh, and I assume you've all read this paper as well?
Yes.
And uh are the contents of this paper true and accurate and correct?
Yes, yes.
And they represent the Australian Government's position, is that right?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, can I ask this question? Um, you've answered, Ms Eastman, by saying it's the Australian Government's position. Was any other authority required in order for this to have the status of the Australian Government's position on the matters that are canvassed both in the background paper and in the answers to the specific question?
Thank you, Chair. I think um you might have picked up a slight hesitation in what we're saying. Uh, we can certainly vouch that it's the position of, uh, the, the matters in it are the position of the department, but I don't believe the papers were cleared through ministers if that's uh uh where you were coming from.
More or less where.
And it didn't uh need to go through any cabinet process, is that right?
Given it was reflecting uh what we thought were to be the um legal and policy position of the government of the day, no. If it had changed, if it had departed from that, then we would have uh sought authority from ministers or the cabinet if that was appropriate.
Want to start with what seems to be uh an overarching uh message from both the background paper from June and the response. And are we right in understanding that the Australian Government's position is that it has implemented the CRPD? It is compliant with the CRPD? And it has incorporated the CRPD into Australian law and practice?
Uh, perhaps I might start uh that response soon, Mr Mansfield, or Ms Robertson can supplement if required. Um, so um if I can just, uh, so the short answer is yes. Uh, but maybe it would be of assistance if I gave just a little bit of history. I won't go into huge amounts of detail. Uh, when Australia um decides to um sign up to international obligations such as the convention, uh, there's a process that's gone through to assess the level of compliance Australia has at the time that we're signing the convention. And that pro- process was followed in relation to this convention.
Just, can I just interrupt you there? I, I need to ask you about that. And I've got a number of questions that I do want to ask you about in two thousand and eight, this process. Uh, my question was really directed as to understanding at the present point in time, does the Commonwealth consider that it's implemented the CRPD? It is compliant with the CRPD and it has incorporated the CRPD? I could take you to various paragraphs, sixty-six, sixty-seven, paragraph three hundred and sixty-four in the November paper. But I want to start by understanding as a baseline, this is the Australian Government's position. It's implemented, it's compliant, and it has incorporated. Am I wrong in understanding that?
No, I think that's correct. However, as there has been evidence in this hearing already, um, we don't think this is, this, this is a dynamic document. The convention is a dynamic document. And what we mean by that is to say that, you know, human rights are enjoyed within a context and that context changes over time. So the social, the economic or the technological circumstances in which rights are enjoyed changes over time. And so I, y- you can't say in human rights, I think that we've implemented, we can forget about this. You constantly need to be thinking about, uh, you know, what is changing in the context of how those rights are enjoyed? And do we need to take, you know, further action to make sure those rights are protected? So it's a dynamic process. And while we would say that we are compliant with the convention, it's partly because we have in place the mechanisms and systems to keep those rights under review and make adjustments as we go along. And just to give you a tiny example, I won't take long. Uh, privacy is a, a very good example of this under Article twenty-two. Where when, you know, it picks up Article seventeen of the International Convention on Civil and Political Rights, when we were worried about Article seventeen drafting that convention, the other convention, we're worried about mail being open and people peering through people's windows. We're now worried about data aggregation and we're worried about social media manipulation. So we kept our privacy laws up to date and we're in a process of reforming them again, including in relation to disability, to make sure that we continue to give effect to those rights.
So we could probably have a conversation shortly about the concept of living instruments and uh organic development of human rights law. But before we get to that, I just want to come back to these concepts of compliance, implementation and incorporation. With respect to compliance, does that mean that Australia says it is compliant with its international law obligations? And so that concept of compliance is looking outwards to Australia's international obligations? Is that what compliance means?
I think the terms are a little bit interchangeable, but yes, that's how I think of it. As compliance is that kind of outward looking. Uh, what is the international obligation? Do we meet that obligation?
Then if we talk about incorporation and implementation, incorporation seems to carry with it the connotation that it's that exercise of taking the international rights and making them part of Australian law. That's the incorporation aspect. Is that your understanding or use of that expression in the, the paper?
I think that's correct, yes.
Implementation might be a combination of a range of things, but implementation might cover something other than hard legal obligations. But implementation might cover policy, practices and a general mood of changing the culture within government, within states and territories. Is that when you talk about implementation, you're giving that a slightly broader concept?
I think that's correct.
And if you look at Article four of the convention, obviously the um obligation there is to adopt um all appropriate measures, whether they be legal or administrative or otherwise.
So I want to go back to uh that point in time where Australia decided that it would take on as a matter of international law, the treaty obligations under the CRPD. Can I start this way? That if Australia is thinking about taking on international legal obligations, and that's for present purposes, focus on treaties, I'm not talking about other international instruments or customary international law. If Australia is considering whether to uh take on the treaty obligations, is the first step that it has to be a national interest analysis?
It's a national int- interest analysis i- is part of the process. Um, I think um there's a whole um range of steps and um the nat- the national interest analysis uh is what gets tabled before Parliament uh through the Joint Standing Committee on Treaties. And that's what allows the democratic discussion to occur about the, the scope of those rights, their impact and why they're in the national interest. And also what if any changes would have to be made in Australian framework? Because we generally have a policy that prior to ratification, um, Australia has in place um already um a framework that is in compliance with the um obligations in uh the treaty it's proposing to ratify.
I think I, I don't know whether you heard Professor Burns's evidence yesterday, but I asked him whether in the ordinary course, Australia would not ratify, and I'm trying to not use the technical language, but take on the international law obligations unless it had its house in order first. Is that the general position?
Yes, it is.
And the national interest analysis is a process of examining the extent to which, within Australia, that the Australian laws, practices and policies are going to meet Australia's international obligations?
The, the, it, it's probably, um, as Ms Robertson was saying, it, it's usually steps that occur before that. So there's an analysis that takes place typically led by whichever department is responsible. In the case of the CRPD, the work was led by the Attorney General's Department. You are now, you analyse the extent to which Australia is compliant. You might do some consultation and other things. And then you put together for consideration by the Parliament, by the Joint Standing Committee on Treaties, um, the national interest analysis, which summarises, I, I guess, the results of that, that previous work.
Right. And were any of you involved in that um step of the national interest analysis? The preparation of material for the Joint Standing Committee on Treaties when the CRPD was being considered by Australia?
No.
No.
Um, we haven't given you this material, but you would be aware that a report was prepared by the J Scott on the case for ratification for the CRPD. Are you aware of that?
Yes.
That, there was a, a body called the CRPD Ratification Task Force. Is that something you're familiar with?
I haven't heard that term before, but I suspect that was the working mechanism within government to consider the, the at a bureaucratic level, to consider the, the convention in its terms.
All right. Without asking you to comment on the content of the report or the work of the task force, but your knowledge generally, it's the case, isn't it, that there was overwhelming support from the disability sector for the ratification of the CRPD? You're aware of that?
So during the consultations, I understand that um there, there were two ways in which the disability sector were engaged uh in that. Ways in which the disability sector were engaged uh in that process. Uh, one was through a public submission process. I think there were sixty five submissions that were received. Uh, the vast majority, I think there were maybe a, a handful that did not support, the rest were supportive. Um, and then we also engaged, the department engaged. Um, the Association of uh Disability Organizations to further engage with the disability sector and provide a submission. Um, about uh the potential impact of the convention on people. Uh, with disability and also the sector, um, and that was also supportive, yes.
Um, there, there was a view, wasn't there, that ratification of the CRPD would have significant positive economic, environmental. Social and cultural impacts on Australia? Does that accord with your understanding?
Uh, there was a, it, I think the main focus was that it would have a very positive impact on. Persons with disabilities and that that would be a very positive step uh, uh, for them both. Both domestically and also at the international level.
And that there were no disadvantages or ne- negative impacts identified. For Australia taking a step of ratifying the CRPD, is that right?
Well, I think it's fair to say that um there were a number of areas that were identified that would require ongoing focus. Um, and one that just springs to mind is um the importance of providing ongoing education and assistance to people. Who are working in the disability sector or working with persons with disabilities. Uh, for example, in the justice system. So there are a couple of areas where it was stressed that uh enhanced effort may be required. Um, but otherwise, I, I think that's correct. And the other thing I might note, and this is in the national interest analysis. Uh, which if you don't have, we're happy to provide you, it's available publicly. Um, it, it's just there would be no um substantial costs associated with um uh ratifying the convention.
There was a view, wasn't there, that the CRPD did not create any new human rights? And that was certainly the government's position as at two thousand and eight, prior to ratification.
As I understand it, that's correct, yes.
And it remains the case, isn't it, that the Australian government considers that the CRPD. Does not create any new human rights. You've said that at paragraph seven of the November paper.
That's right, yes.
One of the issues raised at the time of considering ratification was whether. There would be scope for a national review of laws, policies and programs relating to the rights of people with disabilities. To ensure the provisions of the CRPD are reflected in service and practices that have a real impact. On the lives of people with disabilities. That's one suggestion. There wasn't around the time of ratification or pri- immediately prior to ratification, any steps. For a national review of laws, policies and programs. Well said.
Uh, no, I don't think that's quite correct, because as part of the assessment process before um ratification. The Attorney General's Department uh engaged with the states and territories. Including through the form of a survey to make, to ascertain whether or not. Uh, state and territory laws, practices and programs were in conformity with the convention or not. Um, and there were also a number of discussions that were uh engaged. Uh, through what was then the Council of Attorneys General on that point as well. Um, and um all states and territories uh joined in that process. And the ultimate assessment, which is reflected in the national interest analysis, uh was that um. Uh, for those immediately realisable rights, um, and you know, no doubt we'll get onto that terminology.
We will get on to that shortly.
But for tho- for, for those immediately realisable uh, uh rights that Australia was already in conformity or state and territory laws were already in conformity. Uh, and then for those that require progressive implementation, uh, they were substanti- substantially in conformity. Uh, as well. So that was the assessment at the time.
Now, the uh J Scott Report also touches on a declaration made by Australia. In ratifying the CRPD on the seventeenth of July. The Australian Government made a declaration setting out Australia's understanding. Of a range of issues, including substituted decision making. Compulsory assistance or treatment of disabled persons and the Australian immigration process. If you have the first paper, the June twenty twenty paper. It provided to the Royal Commission as, as attachment A, the. Interpretive Declaration to the CRPD. Have you got that?
Yes, we do.
Yes. What was the rationalisation, or sorry, what was the reason? For the interpretive declaration to the CRPD in two thousand and eight. With respect to each of those three areas. Why was that done? Do you know?
Yes, I think um the Commonwealth was of the view that it would be uh useful from a legal policy perspective. And, and transparency to make clear its understanding of the treaty provision across these three issues. Uh, and uh the first one, which deals with substituted decision making. Um. Basically, uh, makes clear the Commonwealth's position that the CRPD and particularly Article twelve. Uh, does not prevent substituted decision making in all circumstances. Uh, the declaration highlights the importance of legal capacity. Uh, and it's precisely because of the importance of that fundamental right. Uh, that substituted decision making is subject to um important safeguards. That are contained in Article twelve four, uh, and can only be used as a last resort. So uh it was to transparently uh provide an understanding of how we read that article. The second interpretive declaration uh concerns, as you said, compulsory assistance or treatment of persons. And again, here, the government uh and the Commonwealth obviously underline their commitment to the respect for integrity of persons. Um, and uh, and people's physical and mental uh integrity. Uh, but recognize in some situations, uh, that compulsory assistance may be necessary. For example, to guarantee the rights of a person with a disability, for example. With a cognitive impairment that may not be able to make their wishes known, that they receive um medical treatment. Uh, and uh the third interpretive declaration uh concerns migration. Um, policy, uh, and underlines two points. Uh, the first is that consistent with human rights law uh more broadly. The CRPD does not create a right for a person to enter or remain in country of what, of which he or she is a national. Uh, and that's consistent with um jurisprudence and committee discussions. Uh, from the uh International Covenant on Civil and Political Rights. Uh, and it goes to um sovereign rights to um control entry. Uh, and so on, um, of aliens and non-nationals. And secondly, uh, the declaration concerns. Um, the ability for Australia to have visa health requirements for non-nationals. Uh, and this is, has the policy objective of ensuring that uh people have uh an adequate. Uh, standard of health appropriate to the time that they want to come uh, uh, and stay in Australia and undertake particular activities. Uh, it's also uh to ensure that uh risks to public health are, are minimised. Uh, and that the government is able to appropriately and officially uh manage the resources it has to. Uh, in, in relation to the provision of health services for Australians, including people with disabilities. Who are already um in the country. So.
Sound, that sounds like a lot more than simply. Saying this is Australia's understanding about the existing rights. The description that you've given seems to carry a sense that Australia is not. Uh, taking on those particular rights. You accept that it's more than just setting out what your understanding is, but it's setting out what the Australian government will not do. That's a rejection of the rights, isn't it?
No, I don't think I'd say that. I think I'm trying to explain the policy rationale, uh, underpinning each, each one. And I guess what I would say is that um rights can be subject to legitimate um uh limitations.
I do, sorry to interrupt you there. I do want to ask you about legitimate limitations. And the way in which the treaty, both in terms of interpretation and standalone provisions deal with limitations. But it is not the purpose, is it, for an interpretive declaration to build in for each. Uh, state, what it considers those limitations should be. That is not the purpose of an interpretive declaration, is it?
The purpose of the declaration is to clarify how we read our treaty obligations under the convention. And they may be subject to principles um of reasonable limitation under international law.
Well, it might be said that at the very time of Australia taking on the CRPD. Notwithstanding the position is that there's no new rights. That an interpretive declaration gives a nation-state relevant time to get its house in order. Do you accept that that is a function of an interpretive declaration?
I, I think I'd rather say we, our view is that we need to get our house in order before then. Uh, in terms of prior to ratification, uh, and that the interpretive declaration. Um, transparently shows how we are try, how we understand our rights and obligations under this treaty.
Mr Walters, I said a moment ago, that rights are evolving and changing and circumstances change. What is the utility of having the interpretive declaration in relation to those three areas? Continuing in Australia, where we're now some years down the track. For uh working with the CRPD and understanding the CRPD.
Well, I think the Commonwealth of the view that they, they still, um, they still stand and serve a, a, a purpose. Uh, and until, until uh policy changes, the text of the convention. Um, particularly in the first two, I might add, are really talking about some of the most extreme and difficult examples that you could talk about. Uh, in this area. So, uh, I think um those, those situations may still exist. Um, and whilst uh issues of legal capacity and it, and uh autonomy of decision making must be the first point of call. There will be circumstances in which people require support of various levels to exercise their rights. Uh, and the text of the treaty, we say, does not prevent that from occurring.
I, I've seen in the combined, a second and third periodic report that you've provided to the Royal Commission. With the November paper. At paragraph fifteen on page three, that the Australian Government does not propose to withdraw the declarations. Does that remain the case that the government's position is that the declaration should be, should remain?
At this time, that's correct.
And what can you uh tell the Royal Commission about the work done by the Australian Government? In giving a, a careful and comprehensive review and understanding about the impact of these declarations. On meeting Australia's compliance and also implementation.
Uh, so what I can say is that um, one of the things that we use. Um, the uh treaty reporting process. Uh, for, and this applies to all our, uh, international obliga- obligations, not just the CRPD. Uh, is to uh give consideration to any declarations or um. Any reservations that we have in relation to international, uh, in, in relation to those treaties. And we do uh give them consideration as part of the preparations for both the report that we provide and that. And you referred to the one that we submitted to our most recent um cycle review for the CRPD. Uh, but also ahead of um the, you know, appearances that we make under those treaty bodies. So some consideration was given at the time, including uh in uh some discussions with states and territories. Um, I don't think I would go as far as saying it met all those criteria that you set out in your question. Uh, but we do turn our minds to these things. And as an example, we not so long ago. Re- uh, uh, took away the uh, the reservation we had under SEDOR in relation to women serving in the military. Uh, and in combat roles. So they, they are things that are periodically reviewed and uh revisited. Uh, but at this point in time, the Australian Government's position, and that's all I can say, because I'd have to go to ministers, obviously. Is that we will retain those re- uh, those uh interpretive declarations.
M- Mr Mansfield, uh, has the Department of Social Services. And the work done for the National Disability Strategy. Had uh the opportunity to review and understand the impact of the interpretive declarations?
That's not within my direct knowledge, but we can see what we could provide in relation to that.
Uh, has the question of the interpretive declarations been consid- been considered by the focal point in government? Concerning the CRPD?
So you'll be aware um that Australia nominated two focal points.
Yes.
Under the CRPD. So one is um the Attorney General's Department and the other, uh, it was. Originally a different department, but is now the Department of Social Services. Um, so um. As far as the Attorney General's Department focal point is concerned, which is, you know, predominantly sits in, in my division. I, as I said, we do look at that as part of the um treaty reporting process. I'm happy to talk to that. In a lot more detail, if you'd like, in relation to the CRPD. But again, not at that level that you uh, you outlined earlier.
Can I turn now to the Australian Government's approach to interpreting and understanding the CRPD rights?
So just before you do that, I'd just like to be uh a little clearer about the process leading to the interpretive. Uh, declarations. I take it that the reason for making these declarations about the three particular articles. Is that somebody formed the view that on one interpretation of these articles. They might have the effect that is addressed in the interpretive declaration. Is that, is that right?
Do you want me to take that? Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, so um, I might refer you again to the national. Interest analysis that I referred to earlier, which again, we'll provide a copy if it's not available already. Because it actually goes through that in some degree of detail. Um, and um, yes, so during the. Various consultation processes that occurred and that, that, there were basically three, one with state governments, one with Commonwealth governments. And one with the, uh, you know, broader community, particularly targeting the disability community. Um, a number of um issues were raised where it, it was thought sensible to make some clarifications. And they set out in some degree of detail in the na- national interest analysis. What is interesting, I think, um, or maybe interesting to the commission is. Some of those suggestions were made also by the disability community in relation to two of those. Um, uh, interpretive declarations. So historically, there seemed to be a consensus that those things. Uh, were a little, uh, you know, potentially ambiguous in the uh text of the, the convention. It is worth just making it clear that that is our understanding of how it works.
To follow up Ms Eastman's questions. Presumably, in order for there to be an interpretative uh declaration. Uh, there needs to be advice that the interpretation adopted in the declaration is tenable. Is that right?
Yes, I think that's correct.
Was such advice provided at the time the declarations were made or before the declarations were made?
I can't tell you that personally, but from a matter of regular process, Chair, I, I can imagine it definitely would have been. Um, sought.
All right, thank you.
So I want to ask you about the approach to interpreting or understanding the rights in the CRPD. Are we right in understanding the two papers provided to the Royal Commission? That in, starting with international law, we apply the international legal rules. Like the Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties in interpreting. Like the Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties in interpreting international human rights obligations?
That's correct.
Uh when it comes to the next step of incorporation and implementation. So we're bringing the international law into a domestic setting. What is the approach taken by the Australian Government in interpreting and understanding those rights? For the purpose of translating them into a domestic legal setting? Is it still the Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties or something else?
Um I'm not certain the Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties would answer, would answer this question. Uh um I think, um Andrew, do you want?
Yeah, I I'm not entirely sure what you're getting at, but I I I think that the question is going to. Um we don't do direct incorporation um in the sense that some other countries do. Um of just adopting the text as being the text that applies to Australia. We look at.
Just jumping there, we have, we have done that with the Racial Discrimination Act. That section nine of the RDA just mirrors the the convention and the convention sits at the back of the RDA. So we have had examples of that process. And this is why I'm asking you, just take wholesale what the international law says and. Put it into the domestic setting. Or is it a bit more nuanced than that?
With with the greatest of respect, I I I understand what you're saying about the RDA, apart from the fact that. We don't just adopt the convention as it is. Yes, we may use the words of the convention, but we reenact it. Uh through uh the relevant provisions through the uh ras- racial discrimination act. And wherever we can use, where wherever those words in the conventions would be understood within the Australian legal system. Of course, we use those words. Uh but then we might make adoptions and changes to uh. Account for the the legal system that we operate in so that it makes sense within that broader legal context. So of course, you know, I mean, we're we're all uh familiar with concepts of reasonableness within the common law world. Uh so, you know, we might use those concepts instead of some other concepts in the convention. We work through it on that basis. But of course, you know, and you know, we can talk about this concept of a margin of appreciation and those types of things, but we are trying to hew. And we need to constitutionally hew very closely to what those international obligations are.
Is it a difficult task? Uh and I assume none of you are parliamentary drafts persons. But is it a difficult task to take the international law and find the best way. Of taking those international legal norms and making them part of domestic law so they're going to work effectively?
Uh it can be, yes. It can be a a a difficult task, partly because um. Not always, but many international obligations sit at a level of generality that is way above what is necessary to. Uh for there to be an effective law. And so you need to uh take uh. Take the spirit of what is being uh, you know, uh provided for in that international convention. And then translate it into a mechanism that is going to work in Australian law. Um so it it can be quite difficult. And and to give a very simple example, um. You know, Article twenty-six under the International Covenant on Civil and Political Rights is rarely, is is a very, very broad. Uh as as I know you know, a very broad uh uh provision that relates to anti-discrimination. Uh you know, to translate that into domestic law involves a lot of thought and uh developing appropriate processes. For to to give effect to that kind of broad uh discrimination right.
Uh but we've seen that being done in relation to the functions of the Australian Human Rights Commission. So the ICCPR is scheduled to the Commission's Act and Acts and Practices of the Commonwealth. That may be inconsistent, for example, with Arti- Article twenty-six of the ICCPR can be the subject of a complaint. There's no translation of that concept, is there, from Article twenty-six into the AHRC Act?
No, that's quite right. However, if you look at the um, so for example, um uh. As you know, the Disability Discrimination Act predates the convention. Uh and it draws to some degree on those section twenty-six rights. The government's work at the moment on religious discrimination have been exposure drafts. So that draw on the Article twenty-six rights. Um and um of course, uh just to, you know, it's slightly side point, but I think important point. The Human Rights Commission uh Act uh incorporates uh by way of regulation, the CRPD as well. So those rights can be picked up through the Human Rights Complaint Process. Which doesn't have the same uh results as a discrimination complaint. Uh or the 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 commission can attempt to um, I guess, conciliate and settle the matter. Uh but the only power it has at the end of the day is to report on the matter if if it's ever covered.
What i- in terms of this process of understanding the international rights, which might be vague and aspirational in nature? How relevant is the ongoing work of, for example, a a monitoring treaty body? In developing general comments and those general comments then informing the way in which states such as Australia. Understand the nature and the content of the right?
I think it's fair to say um the general comments um provide very useful guidance. Um we'll look at them um. Each on their merits, I guess, and and ascertain, you know, whether it it whether we agree with those. And sometimes we do, and I guess sometimes we don't. Um but I think they can be um uh useful and authoritative.
Is it the Australian Government's view on general comments? And we've asked you specifically on the CRPD general comments, that they are not binding on states. But are nevertheless taken into consideration in interpreting the treaty and policymaking processes. And can provide useful guidance in considering action to implement the CRPD. Is that the Australian Government's position?
Uh I ca- in relation to interpreting the treaty, uh yes, we would look at those comments. But uh as I said, um so they would form part of our advice, but then we'd assess um. Uh what what we think of those particular views, but in relation to policy, I might let Mister Walter answer that.
Uh and just to add, of course, we look at general comments under all the uh treaties and conventions as we consider the um. Relevance and applicability of Australian laws. So we will have regard to them. They're not necessarily the most influential thing, but uh we we nonetheless do have regard.
If it was said that because of the detail in the general comments. That they rise above the actual right described perhaps often in general terms in the treaty, would you agree? With that proposition that the general comments in a sense overtake the underlying right?
No, I don't think I'd agree with that.
Can I come then to some particular features of the CRPD? And I want to ask you about some of the sort of core concepts. And we've seen in the material that with the CRPD, the rights seem to be divided. Into those that are immediately realisable and those that have progressive realisation. And this is a topic covered by one of the general comments to the CRPD. But it's a matter that we've asked you about. So this is coming to topic two, question nine. Um in the context that of asking you about Australia's implementation of the CRPD. So we asked you in respect of the rights. What rights did the Commonwealth consider to be immediately realisable? And which rights does the Commonwealth consider to be progressively realised? Are you able just to assist us in understanding how the Commonwealth characterises? The rights in the CRPD is falling into the camp of immediate or progressive realisation?
Yes, certainly. Uh so um the rights that we would consider uh immediately recognisable. Um would concern, for example, equality and discrimination, uh prohibition against torture, um. Uh liberty and security of the person, um uh privacy, uh right to life. Those um more traditional civil and political rights, but we'd also consider um based on the language of the text, Article eight. In the convention concerning uh immediate adoption of awareness raising as one of those. So they're um some examples of immediately realisable rights.
And what does that mean for Australia? Uh when I've asked you earlier about compliance and incorporation. And implementation. Can you assist the commissioners with respect to those immediately realisable rights? How are they in the Australian law practice and policy? Can you give us some examples?
Uh yes, I'll just first say that um. Part of, part of the policy reason why Australia wants to be in compliance with the treaty is. It's prior to ratification, if so, it can be said to be in compliance with these immediately realisable rights. Um there there's a a couple of ways domestically that Australia has implemented its obligations. And I I know you'd be very familiar with those. Um the Disability Discrimination Act is probably one of the biggest ones. Um but as we said, there's a range of policies and programs at the state level as well. Um and uh the dis- the the disability, disability national strategy. Uh is also an important part of our implementation uh of the convention rights um more broadly. Um uh a number of the civil and political rights are uh contained in a whole, whole variety of of legislation. Um uh and they would uh be in criminal laws, for example, uh and things like that.
And we can point to a whole range of other examples. For example, Article twenty-two, the Privacy Act, uh you know, applies in that instance. And it specifically picks up the categories of sensitive personal information that are identified in the convention. And provides them with additional protections under that act. Um you know, we've mentioned the Disability Discrimination Act and of course, the states and territories all have a range of protections as well that are relevant.
So on on this question of rights that are immediately realised. Are we right in understanding that you're thinking about those rights in the concept of. Traditional views of civil and political rights, which is governments don't have to do a lot. To ensure that those rights might be protected. I gave the example earlier this morning of freedoms. If you leave a person alone to exercise their freedom of assembly, their freedom of movement, then the rights are protected. Are you seeing immediate realisation in the concept of doing not much more than leaving the person alone to go about their business?
That is, of course, um we interpret how we apply rights in the broader context of our overall legal framework. And and structures, and this is a a an issue that we confront uh when we come before treaty bodies that. They tend to be European based and don't like that uh as a starting point. So. Um yes, of course, that is a factor, but of course, the convention also required us to positively remove certain. Uh types of laws as well and make sure that they didn't exist. And that was, as I understand it, that was part of the exercise that was undertaken before. Uh the convention was entered into to check that those laws uh were not in place.
And are we to underst- sorry, go ahead.
I I was just going to add that um the CRPD does also have um. Some categories of rights which don't easily fit into either or. Um so that's an example, I think. Uh when the Commonwealth signs up to these rights, I think it's a recognition of the interplay between um between the systems of rights. So for example, there, if we look to um Article twenty-one on frame of expression and opinion. Or we look to um uh the right to participate in public um in public life and political life. Um those articles, that they're traditional civil and political rights, but there's accessibility provisions within those rights. Which um require recognition that persons with disabilities will need um accessible information to understand public information. Or they'll need um facilities, information and procedures when they go to vote. Um so uh I just make that point that there is an interaction between um the accessibility provisions in some of the more traditional rights.
Uh can I, I'm conscious of time as well, so I want to turn to progressively realisable.
Ms Eastman, I think the schedule called for a short break. Do you wish to have that now or do you wish to continue?
Can I just finish this topic and then we have a a break? So just on this concept of rights that are progressively realised. That's a concept that we see in the economic, social and cultural rights arena. Particularly from the International Covenant on Economic, Social and Cultural Rights. The understanding of progressive realisation is that the commitment to. Complying and implementing that right will be ongoing, but it's a commitment that means you can't go backwards. So could I, this, there's an aspect of the Commonwealth's background paper. Which I want to ask you about. So if you've got the backro- first background paper from. Sixteenth of June last year. Paragraph four on page two says this implicit in the concept of progressive realisation. Is that states' parties are obliged to achieve continuous improvement of conditions over time without backward movement. I don't, I don't think that's controversial, but it's the next bit I want to ask you about. Any retrogressive measures require careful consideration and full justification. With reference to the totality of the rights provided or in the relevant convention. And in the context of the full use of maximum available resources. Do you accept this seems to be an inherent contradiction between the first sentence and the second?
I can understand how it might seem that way, but um perhaps I'll just unpack it a little. I think the concept of retrogre- retrogressive measures has to be understood um in in the broad. Um and so um both the ISESCA Committee uh and even our Parliamentary Joint Committee on Human Rights. Have recognised this in its guidance. Um the the simple um. Sorry, rather, the vastness of economic, social and cultural rights and the programs that they cover. Um inevitably means the government is in uh a. Uh in the business of uh making the most expeditious and appropriate use of the resources it has. Across a whole variety of various needs that are in the community. And um justifiable retrogre- retrogressive measures um goes to where. You may make an amendment to some of your economic or social programs, for example, which has. Um uh an individualized or or a negative impact on on a cohort, for example. Um but when you look at the totality of what government is attempting to achieve, for example, with a social security reform. Um it is viewed as uh it is viewed as acceptable and justifiable. So it's, the coverage is so wide across so many programs and policies. There may be instances where a policy reform could be said to be a rec- a step backwards. But the government, if it does that, has to justify it in terms of the whole. Um an example might be a change to Medicare or a change to social security in which payments are changed. Um and it could be argued that has a disadvantage uh for a particular group or set of persons. Um but overall, the uh policy intent and impact is such that. Um it's intended to provide greater coverage for more people in a particular, in another area, for example.
So that, that, can I just ask you, that might sit quite well with looking at ISESCA alone. But with the CRPD, that strict distinction between civil, political rights, economic, social and cultural rights. Is not a feature of the CRPD. So how is it that the ISESCA model really informs the way in which the CRPD. Should operate with respect to progressive realisation but not going backwards? Seems to be a different framework. Do you accept that?
I think, I think about it a different way. I I think I accept that um CRPD has a range of rights. Some of which fall into um civil and political, some of which fall into more traditional economic and social, and some which are a hybrid. But I think um the fact that the convention itself, in Article four-two, talks to progressive realisation of economic, social and cultural rights. Um indicates that the draft is and the intention behind it was very much to to bring with it, if you like. Um the um jurisprudence and understanding of economic and social and cultural rights into this convention.
And do you accept related to? And do you accept related to that 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 principle of progressive realisation is not unbounded or an elastic prerogative for states to choose when they're going forward or when they might go backwards? Or it's their discretion to say, well, we're going to progress at this rate or that rate? It's not a sort of general discretion, is it, for states as to how they meet their uh economic, social and cultural right obligation?
Uh I think I think about um progressive realization about the when, um and I think about um uh uh the the timeframe involved, not so much the how, which is more to do with the other topic that we'll get to. Um so uh. I would I would say that you are right in the sense that we have to um obviously implement our tra- treaties in good faith, and that requires a certain um expeditious moving forward.
Right. Just to to finish on this point before we have a break, is the concept of margin of appreciation or an expression used in the paper, margin of discretion, relevant to the Australian Government's understanding of meeting the progressive realisation category of rights?
I I see uh I see them as about about different things. So progressive realisation goes to the timeframe, allowed to achieve something because there's a lot of resources involved, it's complex. Margin appreciation goes to the how, how we do things. And international law is not overly prescriptive here. You have to um account for a variety of legal systems, a variety of ways of doing things. So it doesn't really go into the how, and that is um more what the margin appreciation is concerned with.
You've said in the uh paper from the first of November, paragraph thirteen, that the margin of appreciation document, doctrine, is most well-known for its application in the case law of the European Court. And you you've noted that this is about deference that's made to national decision-making. How relevant is the margin of appreciation to Australia's obligations under the CRPD, where Australia's not accounting to any international court? And I want to understand the relevance of this concept, which is applicable to European jurisprudence and the European court structure, as to how and why margins of appreciation have any work to do with the ICCPR. Can you help me on that?
Could I just ask you to repeat um the paragraph number?
Thirteen on page four.
Of the later one. From November. We're just responding to questions.
Oh, sorry.
I think, Ms Robertson, this is still in your area.
Page four.
Yes, but yes, thank you. Um so the margin of appreciation document, um uh doctrine, rather, yes, it does feature in the European case law, and and obviously we're not strictly bound by that. But we also find it a feature of international uh law more broadly. Uh and we find the UN Committee's um uh treaty bodies responsible for economic and social cultural rights, and the CRPD Committee also making reference to it. Uh so uh it's not simply uh something from Europe, but it it has found its way, I would argue, into general principles of international law.
Just uh looking at footnote twelve, you've given to the Royal Commission cases from international economic law. Um EC measures concerning meat and meat products as an example. I've read that case, and I'm not sure I understand its relevance or how that could be a helpful uh authority to assist this Royal Commission understand the relevance of margin of appreciation. When we've looked at the CRPD Committee, we accept that there's, I think, one optional protocol case that refers to the margin of appreciation. But I just really need to understand the basis on which this proposition is put by the Commonwealth, including, if you can, help me on the relevance of EC measures concerning meat and meat products from nineteen ninety-seven.
Why don't we take a break, and you can have quarter of an hour to think of an answer to the to the question, and we'll come back in quarter of an hour. So it's now three o'clock, we'll resume at three fifteen.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair.
Ah, so there we are, thank you. We we had lost you for a little while. I think, Ms Robertson, you were about to uh answer the question put by Ms Eastman. Do you need the question repeated, or do you remember it?
On mute.
Oh. You need to be unmuted, I think.
Is that at our end? I think it's muted on your end. Sorry to say.
You hear us now?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I I I'm not sure whether you heard me, but I asked Ms Robertson whether you want the uh question repeated, or do you remember it?
I think um it would be good to have it repeated, just so I'm clear.
I'll I'll ask Ms Eastman to do that.
Uh I can't assure you that I'll repeat it in the exact words. The essence of my question was the relevance of the margin of appreciation. And looking at the response to the Royal Commission's question, at footnote twelve, what seemed to be a case in support of margins of appreciation and deference is the EC Measures Concerning Meat and Meat Products Hormones Case nineteen ninety-seven. And I do not understand the relevance of uh that decision to the the way in which the margin of appreciation applies to the CRPD.
Yes.
So this is the end of paragraph thirteen.
Yes.
And then into paragraph fourteen. It just seems not to be something that sits neatly. I can put it politely like that.
Thank you, I understand uh what you are saying. Uh I think there's a couple of pieces to this. Uh one is how how this principle has turned up in international uh courts um and in the UN um committees and how they look at it. Um uh and I think in paragraph eighteen to twenty, we just give the example of uh how the ISESCA Committee um has talked about uh the margin of appreciation. In relation to more of our domestic setting in Australia, um I'm minded to uh to provide some more information to you, but I think where it could be relevant, for example, is where we're talking about the constitutionality of an activity and having a a relevant head of power, for example, uh in relation to external affairs. Um the 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 sort of test in relation to whether a a measure is appropriate and adapted to the convention, um but I'd like to check that for you and perhaps um can pre- um assist the Commission in that way with some more information of how our High Court has um drawn on those types of principles.
Yes, all right, thank you. I'm I'm conscious of the time is a fair uh amount that I want to cover, uh so I'll do my best to work through it. The next topic is the Australian Government's view on the concept of equality. And you've set this out in response to our questions for the November paper, starting at page six and then over from page seven and following. Am I right in understanding that the Australian Government does not have a view on whether a concept of transformative equality is a concept in the CRPD? Am I right in understanding that?
Good to hear that one. Um, thank you for that question. Um I think the, so um I think you're aware that in General Comment number six, um the CRPD, the CRPD Committee um adopted the um the idea of inclusive equality, which picks up the word of work of Sandra Fregman on transformative equality and identifies those kind of four dimensions to uh inclusive equality. Um I think that, I I'm not exactly sure um how that term is useful, I suppose, in in the convention, uh it it to to start talking about the convention that way. I think it it's it's a nice way of framing and describing aspects of the convention and the fact that, given that equality is used in kind of, well, I count three and some people count four, different ways throughout the convention and sometimes a little inconsistently, it does it does provide some kind of overall framing for the the convention, but from a strictly legal perspective, I'm not sure that it has any work to do.
So just to, can I just draw your attention to paragraph thirty-seven on page ten in particular? This is the basis of my question. Because the Australian Government does not have a position on whether the CRPD incorporates transformative equality. And then there's a reference to Article three. Uh I just want to understand what that means when Australia doesn't have a position on it. Does it mean Australia is agnostic, it could or it could not? Or is it that Australia has not taken that step of thinking about equality? In transformative equality, that Australia's thinking is still very much in the notions of formal and substantive equality or direct or indirect discrimination? So it's, that's the basis of my question, I'm sorry I didn't make that clear.
Um and it it made me more that I didn't answer that very clearly. Um I I think there's, what I'm struggling with, to be honest, is what work does this concept do for the purposes of the convention? So I I I think it's a useful descriptive uh term to describe what the overall convention is delivering throughout all its articles. But then if you try and read that back into the individual art- articles and you identify those four dimensions that Fregman uh has identified, and you try and read then back into each of the conventions, I'm not sure that the convention convention supports that on its terms. Uh so I think as a framing concept, I personally, I prefer the inclusive equality concept. I think that's more intuitive for people uh than transformative. Um but uh I I I don't know that it has, it may be a good descriptive term for the convention, but we we don't have a view on that. Uh and uh certainly we wouldn't say that the convention, there's some concept called transformative equality that uh the convention uh, you know, is a legal obligation under the convention. So I I hope that's kind of clear.
It, have you read um the research report published by the Royal Commission, prepared by Rosemary Kayes and Therese Sands? Convention of the Rights, yes. So they talk about transformative equality at page twenty-nine, and they describe it this way. It's about changing the structures and systems with a variety of positive measures. So as I understand transformative equality, it is acknowledging underlying power relations that give rise to ableism. And simply thinking about equality as treating people the same or treating people differently to achieve the same outcome, that substantive model of equality is not going to work for people with disability. That to achieve equality, whatever that means, it's about changing the structures and systems around the person rather than implementing measures for the person personally. That's my understanding. Ms Kayes will tell me if I'm wrong in that. And so if that idea of transformative equality is part of the CRPD, then don't we have to engage with that concept? Or are you saying that's the same as inclusive equality?
Uh so there's a few different questions in there, I think. To start with the last one first, um the General Comment uses inclusive equality as the descriptor. It then just adopts Fregman's structure of transformative equality. So I I'm not an expert in this field, but I imagine that the two are are the same thing in, at least in Fregman's conception. I'm not sure whether Rosemary Kayes's uh conception goes beyond what Fregman's conception was, I I just can't speak to that, I don't know enough about the literature. Um I think that if the point is to say that, um for example, and I think this is the example that uh Ro- uh Rosemary uses in her um and and Therese uses in their article, oh, sorry, in their publication, the the research they did for the Commission. If the proposition is to say, if we take a right like the right to life, it is it is not just a hands-off right of saying, oh, well, as long as we don't harm them, it's okay. Actually, for some people with impairment, it's a obligation to provide conditions that will sustain and support life in some circumstances. And I think we would be comfortable with that as a characterisation. But if we're talking about uh something that goes beyond that, and and those terms you just used, I think you asked uh uh Rosemary Kayes about those very ones to give some more practical understanding of them, I'm not sure I quite understand what the practical implications of that are, so I I I wouldn't want to comment on it.
Right, thank you. We also asked you about the Australian Government's position on the concept of discrimination. And one of the aspects we asked you about was whether the Australian Government accepts that the CRPD picks up the concept of intersectional discrimination or multiple discrimination. And are we right in understanding that the Australian Government accepts that proposition? Again, this is a bit assist you, this is from page ten, paragraph thirty-nine, two to paragraph forty-two.
Uh I think I think that's right. We 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 recognise that the the convention text itself does not uh address intersectional discrimination, uh although, and by that we mean uh where a person um is subject to uh multiple forms of discrimination, such that they become indistinguishable. Um but the Commission does, uh sorry, the Convention does make reference to um the challenge, if you like, of multiple discrimination, particularly in Article six, um but probably more broadly, where it recognises that um girls and women, for example, may face multiple forms of discrimination.
So it's a, and I think there's an acknowledgement, isn't there, in paragraph forty-two, that the Commonwealth anti-discrimination laws do not facilitate an individual bringing a complaint in relation to multiple attributes. So a person would have to bring, for example, to use Ms Robertson's example, both a Sex Discrimination Act complaint and a Disability Discrimination Act complaint. But those acts don't speak to each other to see how that's integrated and intersectional, they're separate um pathways, is that right?
That that's correct. Um the only thing that I think is worth adding is that under the Australian Human Rights Commission Act, it is possible to bring uh the two complaints, I guess, together, and they can be considered together, but um as a sort of at the same time type concept, rather than, as you say, the two, the the acts won't necessarily speak to one another.
Let, just, can I put it this way, without getting into the nitty-gritty of it? Both those acts require an analysis of causation, and so we don't have a mechanism that if the causation of discrimination is a combination of factors working, that the standalone sex and disability discrimination acts will not allow that causation analysis to be a combination of both. That's the, that's the gap, isn't it?
Well, I'm, I I actually think the bigger, i- i- with intersectionality, um if we take sex discrimination or uh disability discrimination, it 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 only has to be one of the grounds on which the person was discriminated against, it doesn't have to be the whole ground. So in the instance where um somebody is both disabled and Indigenous and they were discriminated against, uh it doesn't matter, in a sense, which one of those uh is considered a base of the discrimination, or it could be both. Um it just has to, the disability aspect just has to be one of the grounds, the race discrimination just has to be one of the grounds. So it's it's not like the combination gets you another ground. Um I think that what is slightly trickier is remedy. I think that what is slightly trickier is remedy, where you've got a circumstance where you're, you've got those combination of factors. And I think that there is some, you know, the fact that they don't talk to each other there is, is perhaps a, a bit more complicated. But I do think, you know, coming back also just to the convention, the critical requirement in the convention is to make sure there are no barriers to somebody who happens to be disabled within the meaning of the convention, to bring a discrimination claim on the basis of race if that's applicable. And, and that is certainly the case under Australian law, that there are no barriers.
Can I put this proposition to you? If you accept that the CRPD has a model of intersectional discrimination and if you accept the Australian Government's position that the discrimination right is an immediately realisable right, then Australia is not compliant with the CRPD when it comes to incorporating and/or implementing protections against intersectional discrimination with the current federal discrimination laws. Do you accept that?
I think, I think we said the convention does not expressly provide for intersectional discrimination, so we don't accept, set the premise of what you're saying.
So it's based on the premise that the convention isn't interpreted as picking up concepts of intersectional discrimination?
That's correct.
That's right. We see the obligation as being to remove barriers to people being able to bring a claim for other grounds of discrimination, not to address intersectionality.
Right. Can I ask you now about reasonable accommodation, which is one of the core elements of the CRPD? And as I understand it, Australia appears to agree in the background paper that the duty of reasonable accommodation is an obligation that applies immediately rather than one that is progressively realised. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct, that's correct, in terms of when an individual makes a re, makes a request for a reasonable accommodation that meets the test of resources and so on.
That's my second element, that in the, looking at the concept of reasonable accommodation, is it the Australian Government's approach to the CRPD that reasonable accommodation applies on a person-by-person, case-by-case basis, rather than the concept of reasonable accommodation having a more global or umbrella operation? Do you understand that distinction?
Yes, I do. And I would say that it operates in both ways under the convention. So for example, when we're talking about the way in which refusal of a reasonable accommodation can equal discrimination under the convention, we're talking about individual requests for reasonable accommodation. But when we're talking about the broader accessibility provisions, if you like, which are longer term, in our view, they are progressively realisable.
Looking at the definition of reasonable accommodation in Article Two of the CRPD, reasonable accommodation means necessary and appropriate modification and adjustments, not imposing a disproportionate or undue burden where needed in a particular case to ensure persons with disabilities the enjoyment or exercise on an equal basis with all other human rights and fundamental freedoms. So can I suggest that's an example of international law language that's not necessarily accessible to an Australian legal framework? These concepts of disproportionality or undue burden. Do you accept that?
It might be useful to, to look at how the Disability Discrimination Act interprets that provision.
That's what I'm about to, to ask you. And if we want to go to that, Article Two is not directly in the Disability Discrimination Act in these terms. That's right, isn't it?
That's correct.
So in, in the Disability Discrimination Act, is this where we see the manifestation of the incorporation of the concept of reasonable accommodation in Australian law?
So obviously, as I mentioned earlier, the Disability Discrimination Act predated the convention. But yes, the, the act requires the provision of reasonable adjustments in consideration of both direct and indirect discrimination. And in our view, if we, we just stick to the semantic level for a moment, then the concept of reasonable adjustment, we think is, you know, broadly, I would say is broadly consistent with what's provided under the convention. And indeed, in some ways, is probably more generous than what is provided under the convention, particularly around those modifiers.
Can I put a few propositions to you? Is that to the extent that the concept of reasonable adjustment reflects reasonable accommodation? In the Australian law, it is part of the definition of disability discrimination, not a standalone, separate or positive obligation. Would you agree with that?
So not entirely. So in, in the discrimination context, of course, we have built in that, that reasonable adjustments requirement. But there's also the disability standards, for example, which in areas like transport and access to premises, which get to that broader concept of reasonable accommodation that Ms. Robertson was talking about earlier.
They have different meanings, don't they? So in the Disability Discrimination Act, the concept of reasonable adjustment is part of the definitions of discrimination. In the transport standards or other standards, it's got different work to do. Do you accept that?
I do. I think they're, they're both, they're, they're both trying to get to the same space in the sense that you want people to be able to engage in life on the same basis as everyone else. But they are two different tools to get there.
But having the concept of reasonable adjustment in a definition of discrimination, not in the operative parts, means that reasonable adjustment is only going to be relevant if the adjustment would result in a person not being treated less favourably for direct discrimination or a person with the adjustment meeting a condition or requirement for the purpose of indirect discrimination. So in that context, the concept of reasonable adjustment is tied to the definitions of discrimination, but not to the operative parts or areas where discrimination might arise. The definitional.
Well, I'm not sure, sorry, I, I, I suspect I'm fundamentally missing the point that you're trying to make. But the, the way the act is set up in relation to the discrimination provision is to say there are, there's two bases on which people may be discriminated against. One is indirect, one is direct. And then of course, lists all the areas of public life in which discrimination might occur. And in both instances, it tries to say that you need to provide, if you, if you don't want to be bound to have discriminated against someone, you need to have provided for reasonable adjustments. And if you haven't, then that opens up the, the prospect that you may have been discriminated against. So it's trying to get away from that idea of saying, well, I haven't discriminated against you because, you know, no, you know, we've, we've got those stairs at the front of a building and the same stairs apply to everyone. So it's trying to get around those kinds of arguments by saying you must provide reasonable adjustments, and if you haven't, you're exposed to a potential discrimination claim.
All right. If I take your example, if there's a requirement to use the stairs to enter a building, then the way in which reasonable adjustments has been interpreted is that the reasonable adjustment must enable you to climb the stairs. And that's the way the law has been interpreted, not a reasonable adjustment to provide a different level of access, a comparable level of access. You see that in the standards, but not in the act, it's in the Disability Discrimination Act itself. Do you accept that?
I think that the, so the, the act is, so in, in your first example, it's, it's really trying to say, well, I'm trying to access a service, let's say a bank as an easy example, and I can't access that service because I can't get into the building. And so the bank should take whatever steps reasonable to allow that person to get access to the building. It's, it doesn't, as, as you're quite right, in that instance, it's not putting that kind of proactive. You must make sure that your building is accessible, that is dealt within standards. However, of course, the person could be found to be discriminating against an individual or a group of individuals if, if they haven't provided for that access as well.
Right. So part of the, the question really turns on how the courts might interpret these definitions. In your experience, have the courts had regard to the international law framework and understanding the concept of reasonable adjustments or reasonable accommodations? You might not be able to comment on that, but if you can.
I, I, I can't. I, I don't know whether they have or not.
The concept of reasonable adjustment in Australian law, we understand that the adjective reasonable is irrelevant. That it's any adjustment to the point that adjustment imposes unjustifiable hardship. That's the way it operates?
Yes, that's, that's your summary.
And is the unjustifiable hardship intended to reflect disproportionate or undue burden, being the language in Article Two?
We would say it goes, it is a harder test to get over than the test in the convention.
That was the intention?
I would have to go back and look at the legislative history and I, I don't know off the top of my head. So I, I'm happy to provide further information on that and find out what was the intention at the time.
All right. So these are amendments that took effect on the fifth of August, two thousand and nine. So this is when the concept came into the federal law. So it was intended, wasn't it, to reflect the CRPD, the effective ratification of CRPD?
Ms. Eastman, I think the concept of intention here may be a little ambiguous. Are you referring to the subjective intentions of the government of the day, the advice that was received, or intention in the sense in which courts use that as a matter of construction? I think we need to clarify.
Intention reflected in perhaps the explanatory memorandum and the process of introducing the amendments to the law. That the CRPD had, had been ratified, so the intention was to amend the Disability Discrimination Act to give effect to the CRPD obligations.
That's my, that's my understanding, but I would like to go and check that and I'll provide advice.
Thank you. All right. I'll leave the Disability Discrimination Act to one side. Yesterday and this morning, the commissioners have heard about a dialogue model of human rights and one of the aspects including parliamentary scrutiny. At the Commonwealth level, we have a process of parliamentary scrutiny in relation to proposed Australian laws. And Professor Byrne spoke about that yesterday. In your experience, what is the relevance of parliamentary scrutiny with respect to the CRPD? And do you have a view on whether that process has assisted or hindered, in some cases, the steps to comply with the CRPD?
So the, obviously, the parliamentary scrutiny process, there's a couple of elements to it. The establishment of a Parliamentary Joint Committee on Human Rights, which I think is a really important and significant development. And the, obviously, the, the obligation on the committee to consider all bills and some legislative instruments that come before it, as well as the requirement to provide statements of compatibility. So I think that it, it would be difficult for me to say what has been the impact specifically in relation to the CRPD. I think that the broader impact, and I think Professor Burns would have spoken to this, I think it has enriched the discussion and dialogue in relation to human rights within the parliament. And if you read through the reports from the committee, they are quite rich and they do have a real engagement with the various rights and issues that come up. And like, and you know, as my experience has been with most parliamentary committees, they are, they take their role very seriously and, and do seek additional information and guidance. I think that it would also be fair to say that that process has been criticised at times as well. And I think that there are two broad criticisms that are made of it in the kind of commentaries on, on the, on the scheme. One is timeliness. It goes to the timing of, of its considerations sometimes. Particularly with urgent legislation, the committee won't report until after the legislation is passed, for example. And an associated criticism is that it kind of comes too late in the process. That most of the critical decisions have already been made, is the argument. And then the, the second criticism has been around the practice of the committee to take that more discursive approach rather than reaching a definitive conclusion in some of its reports. Although I think that there are arguments to go both ways on, on that particular point.
There is also a statement of compatibility process. And, and we asked the ACT representatives this morning about the role of the ACT Attorney General preparing a statement of compatibility. Is that the role within Attorney Generals at the Commonwealth level, to have that oversight of all of the bills to prepare a statement of compatibility?
No, we don't. However, we do a couple of things. When the legislation was initially passed, we provided training to all government departments who prepare legislation on meeting the obligations of statements of compatibility. The Office of International Law will from time to time provide advice to assist departments. And we provide guidance through our website on how to prepare them. And every now and then, more on an ad hoc basis, I'd say we assist departments who are struggling with that task. We assist them through the Human Rights Unit to prepare those statements.
All right. Now I want to ask you now about the Australian Government's development of a focal point. This picks up a concept in Article Thirty Three of the CRPD. And is our understanding correct in this respect? That the idea of a focal point is to draw together and coordinate the work that needs to be done across governments. And that might be at, in a federal system like our system, at a national, state and territory level. And to bring together all of the work at a legal, policy, practice level to be that point that's got ultimate responsibility for the CRPD implementation and/or incorporation. Is that how the Australian Government understands the focal point?
Article Thirty Three is a little challenging because it creates a range of mechanisms. It creates focal points, coordination mechanism, talks about the framework for monitoring and then engagement with civil society. And there's almost no guidance about what is expected from a focal point or that coordinating mechanism. And the description you've just given, I think, you know, we would say probably conflate a couple of those things together, which I don't think is a major problem. But the way I think about our role is, so we've got two focal points. One is this department, the Attorney General's Department, one is Department of Social Services. So I'll let Mr. Mansfield talk to how he sees his aspect of the role. The critical bits for me of our part of the role look like this, that we are the central point of engagement with the treaty process. We coordinate all, we coordinate the reports that we make to the CRPD, the committee. We engage with civil society as part of that, including making those reports available publicly for comment. We support civil society to engage with the treaty process. We coordinate our appearances. You've mentioned earlier that I headed Australia's delegation to the last appearance. We coordinate our appearances, you've mentioned earlier that I headed Australia's delegation to the last appearance, uh, that's correct. We then, uh, have a role in advising, you know, all relevant departments and agencies, including at state and territory level, about the concluding observations, including the recommendations that have been made. Um, and we also have a standing mechanism which consists of, I chair the standing mechanism, uh, which consists of a range of other de- departments and agencies, uh, with the Human Rights Commissioner as an observer to facilitate that process as well. Um, in addition, as we've already mentioned, the Office of International Law provides legal advice and handles the complaints uh, aspect of our engagement with the convention. So that's what we see as our part of the focal point role, I'm not sure if Mr Mansfield has anything to add.
Mr Mansfield?
So, in relation to one of the ki- key, uh, pieces of work that was led out of, um, the former Department of Social Services, but its predecessor was the development of the Disability Strategy, um, which was intended to be a high level or is a high level policy framework to guide government activity across mainstream and disability, uh, specific areas of public policy. And so I think as part of your question, you talked about drawing together and coordinating, uh, the work that needs to be done. And so to the extent that it does provide some coherence to and guidance to that work, that the, the, uh, National Disability Strategy plays that role. Um, it also, um, drives improved action and performance of mainstream services. And of course, there were, um, uh, three implementation plans developed as part of that, uh, strategy. Uh, and also reporting back against, uh, that strategy. Uh, so the Department of Social Services, uh, certainly has coordinated, um, with the states and territories some of that work. Um, each, um, each department at both the Commonwealth level and the state and territory level is responsible for and accountable for implementing actions um, that give effect to the progressive realisation of, um, the convention. Um, uh, but the department has certainly played a role in, uh, helping to, uh, coordinate and provide public visibility of, um, those activities.
So the, um, role of, and I'm looking at the four, the now completed National Disability Strategy. There's a number of references to the CRPD in the strategy. But it says, for example, the Commonwealth states and territories have assessed the extent to which their legislation, policies and programs comply with obligations in the convention. Uh, was that something that you were involved in? The, whatever the process was to assess the extent of legislation, policy and program compliance?
No, I was not, um, so I've only been in this role for around three months. Uh, but I think it goes to some of the issues that Mr Walter talked about, the process that happened pri- prior to ratification.
I, I think that's right, I think if you're looking at the twenty ten to twenty twenty, uh, yeah. Uh, so yes, that was referring to the process I was talking about earlier where, uh, the Attorney General's Department leads consultations with all states and territories about their compliance with the convention. Uh, and where all states and territories, my understanding is concluded that, uh, they had met the immediate, uh, obligations uh, and had substantively met the, um, ongoing obligations at that period, point in time.
Am I right in understanding that one of the, uh, objectives of the National Disability Strategy was that that process of assessing legislation, policies and programs was not just a one-off at some time prior to July twenty oh eight, it's an ongoing process, is it not?
But, uh, yes, I think it's fair to characterise it as, as that. And certainly there's been, uh, lots of examples of policy change, um, since the commencement of the Disability Strategy that, uh, go to the progressive realisation of the, um, o- o- obligations under the convention. Um, for, for example, the establishment of the National Disability Insurance Scheme. Um, the increased Australian Government investment in improving outcomes for people with disability through the Quality Schools package. There's been the, uh, establishment of the Information Linkages and Capacity Building Programme. Um, uh, the new Australian State and Territory Disability Inclusion Plans, there's a whole range of uh, action and activities that have occurred throughout the life of the strategy. Um, that demonstrate, I think, in a practical way, uh, that, uh, all governments are committed to continuing to improve. Um, and it's not a set and forget, um, uh, a point in time, um, assessment of, uh, compliance.
Just keeping an eye on a time, time, I just want to put a couple of propositions to you drawing on state practice in relation to a focal point. Do you accept that the state practice reflects that the focal point should be at the highest level of governments? And if that's right, should the focal point not be centred in the Department of Prime Minister and Cabinet?
Um, I think that, um. I'm not sure we're in a position to accept or reject that, I, I think that, um. My understanding of state practice is very varied, um, and in your tender papers, you pointed to that uh, Danish study, uh, in relation to, uh, focal points. I think that, uh, you know, backs that up in the sense that, uh, you know, there's little guidance from the committee as to what a focal point should be. There's no, unlike, for example, the work of the Office of the High Commissioner on Human Rights around national me- mechanisms for reporting and follow-up, there's no real criteria for what constitutes a focal point. Um, so, um, you know, I think if you're going to have a focal point, you want it where it's going to be effective. Um, and I think that what we did when we nominated the, the two relevant departments was to say one department has that critical role in the sort of legal framework aspect, another has a critical role in those, the provision of services and programs, and making sure that we were bringing those two together with the intention, as I understand.
That, that reflects state practice, doesn't it? That there has to be more than just international human rights law expertise, but there needs to be specialised knowledge in how to operationalise human rights, that's part of state practice with respect to the focal point.
A- a- again, I think that state practice is not, like, if we're using that state practice as a, just a general observation, you could say, well, sure, some countries. I think countries are trying to do that, but I'm not sure if you're using it in international ter- law term. I'm not sure that we have state practice around focal points.
Would it be, um, sorry, I withdraw that. Are there people with disability in senior roles with responsibility for this focal point work?
Uh, so in the Attorney General's Department, um, so we don't ask people to disclose, uh, whether they have a uh, disability unless it's relevant to providing reasonable adjustments. Um, we, I can say that across the department, uh, through our, the census, the APS census that is conducted every year, ten percent of the department identifies having an ongoing disability and that figure is.
Sorry, Mr Walter, I'm not asking you about that and I'm very happy, I think I've got to ask Mr Mansfield about this in about two weeks' time. I just want to know whether or not there is someone with disability in a senior role for the focal point work. And not a person with, the per- not a person who hasn't told you they have a disability, but somebody with an identified disability. Is there someone in that role?
So, all I can say is no one has disclosed that to me.
But has there been any consideration that there needs to be a person with disability? Assuming, of course, that they have the relevant leadership and, um, experience to be part of the work of the focal point?
Uh, we, so, there's no neat answer. We are always, uh, trying to attract people with disability to work, uh, in, uh, human rights area. We think it's very important to have that lived experience of disability to inform our work. But we also find other ways in which to try and bring those perspectives in as well, including through, um, the consultation processes we go through throughout the treaty process, and I can talk through that if, if that's helpful.
Just on, on Mr Walter's answer, the same, the same is true within the Department of Social Services. And, uh, so the, I can't confirm, uh, whether any of the senior personnel uh, within the area of disability, uh, identify with a disability to the extent that they may not have disclosed it. I, I'm certainly aware that there are senior people who have, for example, children with identified disability because they've mentioned it to me. Um, I, I know that around six point six percent of employees within the apartment have identified through the census process that, uh, Mr Walter referred to have a disability. And of course, there's a, this APS Disability Employment Strategy with a target of seven percent.
Mr Mans, I am going to ask you, I think we've got about an hour and a half allocated to this topic in a couple of weeks' time.
Very good.
Um, I, my question is, uh, intended to be a very simple one. Is there a person with identified disability in a senior role working on the focal point work?
Not, not to my knowledge within the department.
Just a couple of questions and mindful of the time, hope the commissioners will bear with me. Want to ask you about the, um, CRPD obligations extending to non-government entities, be they corporations, partnerships, et cetera. We asked you this as paragraph twenty-five, it's page sixty-nine of the One November paper. Your response is three and a half lines. Is that the entirety of the Australian Government's response to that question? While you're reading that, I'll pose this question to you as well. Is there a role for the UN Guiding Principles on Business and Human Rights to pick up CRPD obligations in the, uh, responsibilities for corporations in relation to human rights?
Uh, so perhaps if I can come at those two questions in this way. Um, obviously, the, at a, you know, in pure international law terms, uh, the obligations are accepted by the state uh, and then the state party, uh, and then it's a matter for the state party to give effect to them. Now, obviously, when you think about, you know, something we've been talking about in terms of discrimination as an example, then of course we impose obligations on, uh, you know, business and, uh, you know, not-for-profit organisations with respect to giving effect to that obligation. Uh, because that's how you give effect to it in society. So I think in that sense, the, the formal answer is, well, that we accept the obligations, but then, of course, we have to implement them. And implementation can involve imposing obligations or, uh, or, or duties on, on, um, you know, corporations and others. Um, and then in terms of the, the next question around the guiding principles, so Australia is supportive of the guiding principles. Um, and, uh, you know, uh, encourages businesses to engage with them. We have done quite a lot of work with business, I think you've, you've heard a little bit about this in areas like modern slavery, reforming our national contact point and areas like that. So, of course, we think everyone has a role to play in giving effect to the convention. Uh, but that's a very general proposition, if you've got some, a more specific question, I'm, I'm happy to engage with that.
Uh, the last topic I want to ask you about is how the Australian Government mani- uh, measures and evaluates its compliance with the CRPD in relation to the work of state, territory governments, specific agencies and Commonwealth departments. Is there an overarching strategy or a framework for evaluating compliance? Or is this just simply the work that you do in preparing periodic reports to submit to the CRPD committee? I'll try to truncate what could be a very large question there.
So how about I give the general picture and then Mr Mansfield can speak in more detail? Um, so, uh. We absolutely, as part of our, uh, reporting processes, uh, engage in that activity of, uh, uh, gathering information and data to support, uh, what we put to the committee. Um, that has, um, also resulted in us identifying at times areas where better data collection is required. Uh, and, uh, one example is in relation to the area of sterilisation, uh, where following our twenty thirteen appearance, we provided some funding for an annual report to be prepared through guardianship tribunals on, uh, sterilisation, uh, of person, of adults with a, uh, with cognitive impairment. And that report is made publicly available each year. So that's a, just a very small example where, as part of that process, we identify data gaps which were then, uh, action was taken to try and address those. So that's kind of a very holistic picture and then Mr Mansfield can talk a little bit more about the data collection strategy through the National, uh, uh, Disability Strategy.
So in relation to the current, uh, National Disability Strategy, certainly there was, um, collation of material from states and territories and across the Commonwealth around activities that were undertaken, uh, as part of the strategy. Um, one of the pieces of, uh, feedback that's been received through the review that was undertaken by the University of New, New South Wales around the strategy, as well as through other processes, has been, uh, the need for better measures and, um, uh, clearer measurement of outcomes. A- and certainly there's been considered effort, uh, since, uh, no, uh, since November twenty seventeen, when disability ministers, uh, initiated or, or indicated that they, uh, intended for a new disability strategy to be developed. One of those particular things that was, uh, commissioned was for the Australian Institute of Health and Welfare to do some work around understanding what, um, data points were available across, um, uh, across government. And that led to a publication called People with Disability in Australia, uh, which was released in twenty nineteen and then updated in twenty twenty. Uh, there's also been the establishment of a pilot, uh, called the National Disability Data Asset Pilot and some further work around that to identify, uh, some test cases, uh, for how we could gather better data to measure outcomes within the NDIS. Uh, there's an outcomes, uh, framework and there's, uh, survey collection as part of the process of reviewing people's plans to identify, um, uh, what outcomes they're achieving, uh, so that in an aggregate picture, you can get a sense of, um, level of achievement. Um, uh, but it's, it's fair to say that this, it's an area of ongoing improvement, forever improvement around collecting better data. Um, and of course, in some areas, uh, it's difficult where people may not identify that they have a disability. And so some collections, w- w- we may not necessarily be aware, um, that people have disabilities. So there's incomplete areas of data, but certainly as part of the new disability strategy that's currently, uh, before, um, first ministers for final endorsement. Um, there's a significant component around outcomes measurement and data collection and intention with it for a data improvement plan, uh, that would see better collection and some of that was co-designed with the disability community and there was a paper, um, published, um, during the, the course of the strategy development around the overall approach that was intended to be taken. And certainly the feedback from the disability community was that they wanted, uh, stretch, um, uh, uh, they wanted to reflect as many measures as possible, even where, uh, data was imperfect or not currently collected, um, with a, with a commitment to improve data collection over time. And that's the approach that's being taken.
Is one of the issues that we don't have, uh, a, a single definition of disability in all of the areas where disability rights and interests may be affected. We have different definitions, is that an impediment to, uh, collection of data? The absence of a national approach to disa- what disability means?
Uh, I might, uh, come back with further information if it would assist be- because I, I'm fairly certain that the Australian Institute of Health and Welfare and the Australian Bureau of Statistic- Australian Bureau of Statistics have done some work in this area to try and align definitions, but it's not something that I'm personally aware of.
That's fine. I don't want to take you outside the areas that you know. I'll pass to the Commissioners. I'm conscious of time, but can I thank you all for appearing at relatively short notice and for your very thoughtful and care in preparing your evidence today. Thank you, Commissioners.
Yes, thank you, Ms Eastman. Commissioner Ryan, do you have any questions?
Yes, I just wanted to take you to page 63 and 64 of your response, where you explain what happens to the the observations made by the Committee on the Rights of People with Disability. And it has a distribution list of people. And then you explain that it is circulated to a bunch of ministers and government departments. And then at paragraph 351, you say there is no requirement to directly respond to concluding observations immediately after and so on. You'd be aware of the fact that the submissions made to the committee are pretty scathing in their description of how they believe that Australia has performed. And even the committee's concluding remarks are still pretty serious criticisms of Australia's performance on the CRPD. Do you think that just distributing that to a bunch of departments and ministers is in any way going to ever achieve progress on any of those things? Is that the way we would ever do anything in the public sector?
So, thank you for the question. It's not the only thing that happens. So in all cases, that is what happens. We make sure that that information is provided to everyone who needs to know about it and so that they can take relevant account of it as appropriate.
So go ahead and complete your answer.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Chair. There are then, there's probably two other things I'll mention, and I appreciate we're pressed for time. One is that as part of something called the Universal Periodic Review, which is kind of a global assessment of everything we do in the human rights space, Australia made a voluntary commitment as part of the development of the new National Disability Strategy to be informed by the most recent set of concluding observations by the committee. So there is a process that they're being folded into that consideration. So I just make that point because I think that's important. The other thing I would say is that individual recommendations do get picked up and considered. So you'd be aware that the committee in 2013 and 2019 was concerned about the indefinite detention of people with cognitive impairment. So following the 2013 concluding observations, a process was undertaken with the states and territories to develop a statement of national principles on that. And a number of other jurisdictions have been, a number of the jurisdiction states and territories, because that's where the issue principally arises. I'm not trying to say Commonwealth doesn't have a role, but that's where it principally arises, have been doing work in that area, that has taken into account those recommendations. So it's not a complete black hole, as I think you're sort of suggesting, that these just disappear into. We have a general process and then particular conclusions or recommendations can be picked up and acted on. And there are examples where that has occurred.
Well, the criticisms on Article 14 was in fact a case in point. I don't think you could get a more serious criticism of a country's conduct than we're incarcerating people on the basis of their disability. And sure, there's a bit of a process that you've just described that might have received reports from other people, but don't you think that that would be exactly the kind of thing that somebody very senior in the Commonwealth public service would want to make sure was not going to reoccur? And whenever the next review occurred, or that there would be some substantial progress on a matter like that?
So that matter was taken to the, I think the name at the time was the Standing Committee of Attorneys General? So it was taken at ministerial level and discussed. So it's not that it was ignored. There were ministerial discussions about it that led to the work that resulted in those statements and led to follow-on work in the state and territory jurisdictions. So I don't think it's right to say that it wasn't taken seriously.
Leave it at that, Mr Chan.
Thank you.
Commissioner McKeown. Thank you, Chair. Yes, I have three questions. Again, I'm conscious of time. Thank you all of you for your evidence. My first question, I'll direct to Ms Robertson because I want to understand better your comments on Article 12 and the interpretative declaration. What we've heard in this Royal Commission so far is that we've heard that substitute decision-making systems are a denial of disabled people or disabled personhood. But how do you reconcile that view with your Australia position that the CRPD allows for substitute decision-making systems?
I think it's a really important and difficult issue. Can I just say that first? This issue, because it does touch on something at the heart of the convention. And that is legal capacity and people's ability to make their own decisions. But we're basing our interpretation here on a reading of Article 12, which we say does not preclude substituted decision-making. That does not preclude a policy discussion and how contentious this is. There's many views on this. But I'm giving the position from a legal point of view that we think that Article 12 does not prohibit this with the appropriate safeguards. That does not necessarily detract from the complexity or the problematic nature of some of this. And that's why I said that I think the Commonwealth recognises that these situations, particularly at the very extreme end, where it's difficult for people to express consent or express their view and where they may be denied medical treatment on that basis, is very difficult and one in which we understand there are strong opinions both ways. But I'm simply advising from a legal point of view that the article as it stands there does not prevent substituted decision-making as a matter of lost resort and where those appropriate safeguards are in place under Article 12.4.
Thank you. I'll leave it there for now. I think we need to continue to look at that issue. The second question is to, well, any one of you, is we've heard from many witnesses in this hearing and in research reports that the CRPD obliges states parties to dismantle systems that segregate disabled people from non-disabled people. And we've heard from people in the Royal Commission that segregated settings such in living, education and in the workplace continue. So how did Australia reconcile those two things?
Thank you, Commissioner. I think it's a bit difficult for us to engage in the abstract. I know that you have a particular interest in education and the continuation of special schools.
I'll just pull you there. I'm talking generally. Yes, I might have, I don't have particularly interest, Mr Walter. I'm interested in the CRPD in general.
Sure.
But I respect your response.
Yeah. So I think we're just finding it a little bit difficult to engage because we would say...
Do you want to take that question on notice? Because it does raise some general issues that in fact we've canvassed over the last couple of days in many ways. If you want to take that on notice, that's fine. If you want to give an answer now, that's also fine.
Thank you, Chair. I think that's a good suggestion, only because we would need to engage with particular articles in the convention which have different thresholds and tests. So we might have to just think about how we might respond in a way that assists the Commission the most.
All right, we'll certainly provide for that. Was there another question?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for that. My final question to any one of you is on, well, paragraph 66 of your response dated 1st of November. I'm not going to read it out, but I'll just read out particularly what I'm interested to understand. You say the convention should be understood as a set of living commitments that ought to be continually revisited as the understanding of disability develops and as attitudinal and environmental circumstances change. Can you tell me what you mean by attitudinal changes? Are you saying that attitude in the community that needs to be changed? Your response to implementing the CRPD in Australia is contingent on particular attitudes in the community? Just to give you a bit of context to wanting to understand that paragraph better. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. What we're trying to say there, and it was what I was talking about way back at the beginning of this discussion today, is very much saying that the convention is dynamic in the sense that it has to operate in the world. And when we think about a right, we may say, you know, it's almost like the social model of disability, really. The right has to intersect with the environment in which it's operating. So as technology changes, as society changes, as the economy changes, then we need to make sure that the protections or the services or the supports we're providing also change to reflect that reality. So otherwise, we can't say that we are protecting those rights adequately. And to pick, you know, a relatively simple example, were there to be, you know, were there to be clear evidence that people's perceptions of a particular impairment was causing problems for people with that impairment? Then that might be something that, you know, you would want to address as part of the convention. And as attitudes shift and change, you might say, actually, that's an area we don't need to focus on as strongly because that right is more easily enjoyed.
Sorry, are you saying, Mr Walter, that if a non-disabled person perceived a particular disabled person impairment as not requiring adjustment, then you wouldn't be fulfilling your CRPD? I didn't quite understand that.
No, no, sorry. I'm not being, sorry, Commissioner, I'm not being very clear. It's part of the broader context in which a right is enjoyed. And if, you know, as we do in all circumstances, if the right sits there and it's always there and we need to give effect to it, but in certain circumstances, we'll need to take additional measures to make sure that that right is enjoyed to its fullest. And there's a whole variety of factors that might impact on the ability of a person to enjoy that right.
Okay, I'll leave it there. Thank you very much, all of you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask a question of Ms Robertson. As I recall, you indicated that the Australian Government takes account of general comments made by the UN Committee, but that sometimes it agrees, the Australian Government agrees, sometimes it does not. And if it does not, it does not necessarily adopt the views of the Committee through its general comments. What would lead the Australian Government to determine that it does not accept what the UN Committee has said in a particular general comment? I'm not referring to any specific one, but just what are the criteria?
Well, we would do a legal analysis of what the Committee has said. And if in our view, it went beyond either their mandate or what we considered to be the correct legal interpretation of the treaty, that's the approach we would bring. So we would do a legal analysis of what has been said and see whether that accords with our views.
I take it from your answer that it implies that on some occasions, the Australian Government takes the view that the UN Committee does exceed its mandate and does inaccurately interpret the convention?
I think it's fair to say there are times when we disagree, but I haven't got examples in front of me, so I don't want to be too specific.
No, I'm just asking whether your answer implies that.
I think that's correct.
Thank you. And the process that you have just described, does the Australian Government regard as consistent with the standing of general comments under international law?
Yes, we would take that approach with other general comments of treaties to which we are a party, treaty bodies to which we are a party.
Thank you. Now, I'll ask if any of the parties represented have any questions to put to any members of the panel? If not, I think we can take it that that concludes your evidence. And thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission and giving evidence. We're grateful for the preparation that you have obviously undertaken and for the material that has been provided to the Royal Commission. I think there are a few matters that have been taken on notice one way or another. So we'll build that into a timetable that we'll talk about in just a moment. So thank you very much for your contribution to the work at the Royal Commission.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Commissioners, can I tender then into evidence the two papers that are referred to in the course of the panel discussion? The first is the Australian Government's background paper on the United Nations Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities, Part One, Australia's Position and Interpretative Approach, dated the 16th of June 2020, if that could be marked, Exhibit 18.20.
That could be done, thank you. That document will be admitted into evidence with that marking.
And the second is the Australian Government's response to questions in a letter from the Office of the Solicitor Assisting the Royal Commission, dated 6 October 2021, which is dated the 11th of November 2021, if that could be marked, 18.21.
That also will be admitted into evidence with that marking.
I'm not tendering the 6 October letter because the response sets out the relevant questions clearly. I wanted to conclude the two-day hearing by coming back to the relevance of rights to people with disability. And you may recall Colin Hyscoe's evidence at Public Hearing III. And I want to remind you of what he told us then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Why is it so hard? And why is it so damn difficult to be able to get into CIUs or the group homes? Why is it so difficult for people with a disability to have the same basic human rights as anybody else in this room or in the community? Why is it that we can't have the same basic things? You're allowed to get married. I might not be because I've got a disability. You're allowed to go to the pub. I'm not. I've got a disability. I'm in a group home. Doors get locked at six o'clock. You're allowed to have children. I'm not. Why? Because I've got a disability. When is it going to end that people with a disability have the same basic human rights as anybody else in this community? I apologize for yelling and screaming. I just get so passionate.
I think it's fair to say that we remember Mr Hyscoe's evidence very well.
Commissioners, all that remains is some directions. And Commissioners, we've circulated a set of directions. I think there's one matter on which there may be some difference. Chair, you've got a copy of the proposed directions.
Can I just deal with Direction One? Because I think that there were a few matters that were effectively taken on notice by the representatives from the Australian Government. I think the approach to that would be if you and Mr Kennett, or at least those on your teams to whom you delegate the task... your teams to whom you delegate the task, can identify the questions that have been taken on notice based on the transcript and with such modifications as may be appropriate, and then the answers can be provided in accordance with Proposed Direction One. So, Proposed Direction One would be, by Friday nineteen, November two thousand and twenty-one, any witness who took questions on notice during the hearing should provide their answers in writing to the Office of Solicitor Assisting the Royal Commission. These answers should be targeted and concise. So, I take it there's no difficulty about making that direction on the assumption that I've just put forward?
Yes, thank you.
Now, I understand that parties with leave to appear wish to have a provision to provide additional documents. But I'll ask if there's any issue about it, but first you might indicate your response to that.
Well, Commissioner, I'm concerned that the parties with leave include three of the state governments, which we have not focused on today, and there may be an occasion that the Royal Commission wants to address specifically with the state and territory governments, their obligations under the CRPD. So, I would oppose the Royal Commission receiving any documents from the parties who haven't had an active involvement in this hearing. Then, with respect to the Australian Government, I am concerned that we had sought for this hearing to keep the level of documentation quite concise and confined. There's a vast array of documents that could be provided, and my concern, Commissioners, is receiving a large number of documents to be tendered into evidence where we have not had an opportunity to test or explore the content of those documents in the course of the public hearing.
The actual Proposed Direction says, provide any additional documents the parties wish to suggest for tendering by council assisting. Not that they are to be tendered, but you're concerned about the volume of material that may come in and require a judgment to be made?
I am. I understand this is proposal from Public Hearing sixteen, which I was not involved in. So, I may have a different approach to the reception of large number of documents following a hearing. My concern is that if there are any relevant documents that we have an opportunity to test them. And you'll see, Commissioners, that we've included in our tender bundle some background material. So, the parties were aware of background material that was available to the Commissioners, but I wasn't proposing to tender all of that material.
All right. Let me ask Mr Kennett first. Mr Kennett, is there anything that the Commonwealth needs to submit for tendering that can't be addressed through responses to the written submissions prepared by council assisting?
Your Honour, that suggested order comes from us, and we have in mind one and possibly two fairly specific and, I suspect, tangential things that arise from comments made by witnesses yesterday and this morning. So, we would, one of them, I think, may have already been sent to our colleagues solicitors assisting. So, there were two factual propositions which, as we understand it, are at best tangential to this hearing's concerns, but which the Commonwealth would not wish to go unanswered, and we intended to meet those if we could by encouraging our learned friends to tender, as I say, one and possibly two documents.
So, you are telling us that there will be only a couple of documents that you would seek to have a senior council assisting tender?
Yes, Your Honour, and certainly not an expansion of new areas of discourse on international law or anything of that kind.
All right. Thank you very much. Now, is there any, Ms MacMillan, I can see you on the screen. Is there anything you want to say about what Queensland would want to do?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Firstly, can I say this is the first we've heard about this from Ms Eastman. That material, she says, was provided to the parties, was provided Friday, so I need to take instructions from my clients.
Sorry, what is it that, this is the first you've heard about? I'm not sure.
About the background material she said was provided to the parties. I'm pointing out it was only provided on Friday. So, we've not had a lot of time to absorb it. There's been some oral evidence that I was watching-
I'm not here. Can I clarify? I'm sorry if I haven't done so. The background material will not be tendered in this hearing. We provided it to the parties on the basis that the parties had an opportunity to see some background material that the Commissioners had read, but there is no intention to tender that material.
I'm not sure what we're talking about, actually. What sort of background material?
That would be the material I think you'll find in Volume Three of the, what we've described as the Hearing Bundle. So, those are articles, some academic articles.
Yes.
But they're not being tendered. They never were in-
Yeah. Well, Ms MacMillan, it doesn't sound as though you would need to be tendering any other documents. Anything that you want to say that arises out of the council assisting submissions presumably could be addressed in your responses if you need to?
Well, yes, we'd be content with that as in the usual.
All right, thank you. That's the approach that, in principle, I would take to the other parties given leave to appear. Does there anybody who wishes to contend, any other party wishes to contend that they should in fact have leave to provide additional documents that they wish to have tendered, apart from Mr Kennett's client? If not, then paragraph one A can read, "The Australian Government will provide any additional documents they wish to suggest for tendering by council assisting by nineteen, November two thousand and twenty-one." And Mr Kennett, as you heard, I've noted that you've indicated that there'll only be a couple of documents that come into that category. Thank you. Proposed Direction Two follows, I think. "Council assisting the Royal Commission will consider any additional material produced by the Australian Government and determine if any additional steps need to be taken. By Wednesday, eight, December two thousand and twenty-one, council assisting will tender into evidence whatever additional material she considers appropriate." Direction Three, "Council assisting will prepare written submissions. By Tuesday, fourteen, December two thousand and twenty-one, council assisting submissions will be made available on a confidential party to those parties with leave to appear at this public hearing." And Direction Four, "Those parties who wish to make submissions in response to council assisting submissions should do so in writing by Tuesday, one, February two thousand and twenty-two. The submissions in response should be concise and should not include any additional proposed evidence."
Thank you, Chair.
Is there anybody who wishes to say anything about those directions? If not, I'll regard them as having been made. I shall regard them as having been made. Thank you very much. Ms Eastman, is there anything else that you wanted to say?
No, just other than thank the Commissioners and those following the proceeding that we've gone a little over time. So, thank you for your indulgence.
And I would like to conclude the hearing by thanking everybody who has appeared to give evidence. It has been a, I can say, I think, a very interesting and stimulating couple of days, and we're very grateful to all of the witnesses who have given evidence, both of their appearance, their oral evidence, and the care that has gone into the preparation of their evidence, and also, of course, to add the thanks on behalf of the Commissioners to council assisting, the Office of Solicitor Assisting, and all those who have contributed to the orderly conduct of this hearing. As always, we are extremely grateful for the expert work that has been done by the staff of the Royal Commission and by the assistance and through the assistance provided by Law in Order, and of course, the Auslan translators who have done their usual excellent job. So, thank you, everybody. The next hearing of the Royal Commission will be on-
Twenty-second of November.
Twenty-second of November, which will be Public Hearing nineteen, which will deal with the second aspect of the employment hearing. So, we're now adjourned.
The Royal Commission is adjourned.